Okay, it's on the YouTube now, let me just check the Zoom. Can can someone pull up the YouTube on their um cellphone and check the sound? Are you on Hannah?
Not yet.
You guys all set on the tech?
Yep, we're just trying to test some things beforehand.
Hannah, can you just look at the TV? Sorry, I'm making you do a million things at once.
Yeah, I'll sit over here.
It looks good. I'm trying to pull up the YouTube though.
You can see the Zoom? Oh, let me share the link, let me share the.
Yeah, cuz I was like, I couldn't find it on.
Yeah, it's unlisted, I forgot.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz I was like, I couldn't find it on.
Yeah, it's unlisted, I forgot. Hannah? Bill Gay is running late.
What? Can you turn yourself up Tatiana when you talk cuz I can barely hear you?
I'm talking to Jeff.
Oh, okay. H dot Barker twenty-five at N C F.
Yeah, it's blurry. Yeah, it's blurry.
Can you turn the lights off on the projector or like the the first two rows? Thanks.
Did you get the link Hannah?
Not yet, I'm loading it or like reloading it. Typically I get an email right away, but I don't know why I'm not. Did you get it? Tatiana, did you get the email from music? Okay. Cuz I still haven't for some reason.
Check your spam.
I am, I'm literally in my spam, I only have one thing in my spam. She got it, I don't know why I didn't get it.
I got it in my spam.
She she has it on hers. It's, I don't know, it's not sending to me, so. I'm even checking my junk. Well, it's just unlisted, so. It's still live, see how it says live for six minutes? It's like you can you can, yeah, yeah. No, well, yeah, cuz you have to send the link.
I texted it to you.
Okay.
In the group chat.
Cool.
The sound, the sound works.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's working. Jeff, it's working, yeah, it's working, I have it up, yeah. And, yeah, it's live.
You have Zoom on your phone?
Me? Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna send, do you want me to send it to you? What?
When you send it to me though, I need to go out again, correct? To test it? Okay.
I'm just gonna send it to both you and Jeff.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, I just sent the practice link. It's a, it's Jeff, I just sent the practice link.
I'm in the waiting room or whatever.
Hannah, I can't hear you when you talk.
I know, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna be too. Okay, I'm gonna just hop outside real quick. But you can hear me.
You don't need, you don't need to go outside cuz it's not looping where you are now.
Not outside, outside. Outside the room, so I didn't get the echo.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, cool. Ashley, you first.
Hello. That sounds good. This is number two, this sounds good. This is number three. This is number four. Sounds good. This is number five.
This is number six. This is, this is seven, I think this one should be up a little maybe. Eight, eight also, okay, eight is good. Nine.
Ten. Eleven.
Twelve. Thirteen.
Uh. It's one oh three.
I thought we went ninety minutes of one fifteen.
You said one, we said one fifteen, we left.
We're still doing check, check, still. So I think we're there, I see if they're, hopefully they're hanging out, we can get them up online. Okay, so, really, if I, if you, groups are probably gonna do this, uh, somebody, the people in the booth with Tatiana and Hannah. So they could be the, the changeover woman's time, the rest of the folks, they'll be in the office, I'll really be helping out, they all know what you might need, okay? And somebody back here would be, would shop with me, so, today, since you're brand new, we'll chat with you. So, where I'm at, you're at, okay, come. Rest of y'all, go ahead. So, what we do here, because we still have a brand new chat on the camera, we basically, we're gonna, we have to put, and like this, so we are ready, we're kind of ready to go, everything's good, we don't have to do much. Nothing has to be pressed or pushed, as soon as she, as soon as it go live, then it's live, everybody can see. Right now, we're just testing it. So if something comes up, like, uh, if they need something, then we, of course, will, uh, we will, uh, try to go out and help whatever, so you have a lot of people, and you're doing a lot of different things. What we don't want is people trying to cut across the camera. So if somebody's, like, if you're standing over here on this side of me and somebody tries to cut his way, they need to go out that door. If somebody wants to go across there, they need to go out this door, okay, so we wanna try to prevent as much movement across the camera, because, you know, you'll see that. Right now, we got a pretty wide angle shot, the rhythm there's that was a little bit more. Cuz it, I get, I can get everybody to take a minute. And it's pretty much a medium shot. Did she, Joe, I think she gave me, I think Chrissy gave me a agenda. You might let me see if I got it, I think she sent it to Josh. And it was just, which was a dog. Is it sent to agenda?
Yeah.
I think it does, and she goes, she should've sent it to both me and Hannah.
Have you seen Jeffy?
Who?
I saw her after pizza last time, about twenty minutes ago.
We're the ones that created algorithms and rabbit holes where you go down online that are never.
We got an area, everybody, the media's right here, or this back area, I think, is for the media. This reserve for media states, and this public comment, public comment, all media, okay? So media's back here, so, and I already put a sign here, nobody could stand. So, basically, you know, just be like, we're here on this side of me, and then they'll just go for them.
Yeah.
I mean, I looked at a few, but I didn't look at everybody.
Thanks for coming. This is. Okay, so this is Kelly. Brad. Dwight, he's a big count, uh, campus caster. Kristen T. Erica. Mario. Kevin. Sydney. Sue Jacobson. A P O down is here. A D M, she's with somebody. Gianna and Lee, who else there with the long campus? Norm Worthington. I wasn't sure, Claire Spears is coming, so I put Claire Spears.
All right, you may wanna start letting media in.
Huh?
I'm gonna start letting media in?
No, no, you're gonna just hear it away.
We gotta get, we gotta get in place.
Hold on.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, hold on a second.
Terrell? Terrell?
Yeah, we're staff, but I heard that.
You know where you're going?
Hello. Hello. Media's the back three rows. Unless you've got six, yep. We've got fifty, over fifty public commenters. Yep, these are all designated for public commenters, the last three have been on the back three rows.
What about the chairs?
What?
What about the chairs?
Uh, I don't know what's on there.
Okay, I always forget, is there a place to plug in for audio? Okay, I don't think so.
Six right here. That's it, it's only the back three rows are.
Or anywhere.
I'd rather be somewhere, I don't have, I don't have to walk half a mile to get there.
There's one right there where he said, Terrell, the one where it's me.
Yes. Yes, yeah.
I talked to a friend of yours the other day.
Who's that?
Burning Friedland.
Oh, yeah, how's he doing?
Doing well.
Good.
This looks.
Media was sticked over. Taped area, the last three rows back there are all media. We had fifty, fifty, sixty.
Why am I always very?
I can't move it now, because it's where the cops need to be.
It'll be a while.
Oh, these are all numbered.
It's a system speaking.
Second row. The third row of chairs.
Oh, no, no, I don't play around. Yeah, there are.
I think you only have one additional.
It's hard for me, yeah.
Oh, no.
I don't pass.
That's.
Give you for a while.
Oh.
I have an eighty-two.
I saw him. Hi.
Hi.
Almost, just next few rows.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And the, the numbers are on the chairs. It's about ten rows. Your number is?
Okay.
You'll just find it on the seat. Here at the right. And Grant is at the back.
We listen to the suit and one.
Okay, I'll look around. I'll look around. Is that media?
Oh, I'm.
Okay, over on this way if you don't mind. I just have a lot. Hello. Love you all, you like the big room. Sorry, I can go upstairs. The chairs.
She's a. Foundation woman. Sharon.
Now, how do you know when the kids will come back in three years? Did you, did you say?
Yes.
You good?
Yes. He was. The numbers are on the stairs. I think you'll be in the, the front row. Kristy Austin.
He's so funny.
Maybe. No, 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 I just, just so. I just.
Easy, they're easy.
Yeah.
They're pretty hard.
No, you already.
Sorry. Oh, I wonder what the TV is for.
Maybe it's so that they can see the aldermen's on video.
Maybe, yeah, makes me wonder if there are people joining virtually then. And I bet they'll be projected up there as well.
Two, three. Four, five. Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve chairs.
I see Bowlin, Galvano, Deja, Corcoran, Eddie. Who is that? Lance Karp. Oh, I'm blind. Spalding. Someone else. Kristy Fitzpatrick.
Trustee Cristaldi, can we test your audio?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sounds all good.
Perfect, thank you.
Trustee Cristaldi, can we test your audio?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sounds all good.
Perfect, thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound?
Check, check, check.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ruffo, can we test your sound? of heaven. Let all that speak and labor here today do so for the common good and the sake of serving God and our campus community. Remind us of our spiritual purposes and shine your divine eternal light of peace into the world through our work here today. Blessed are you, who blesses our board with efficacy, with wisdom, with friendship, and with wise leadership. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Ms. Fitzpatrick, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can you please call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Anderson is excused. Trustee Bauerline?
Here.
Trustee Karp?
Here.
Trustee Keenan?
Here.
Trustee Kessler, he'll be on a little later. Trustee Lipinski?
Here.
Trustee Mackey?
Here.
Trustee Ruffo?
Here.
Trustee Ruiz?
Here.
Trustee Spalding?
Here.
Trustee Spear?
Here.
Chair Jinks?
Here.
Vice Chair Cristaldi?
Here.
We have a quorum and the meeting was publicly noticed.
Thank you. As most of you are probably aware, we have established the Presidential Search Committee. I jumped the gun. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. We've established the Presidential Search Committee with 15 members, including trustee Matthew Spalding, Board of Trustees as Chair, and the Board's designee pursuant to 1.002 the Board of Governors' Regulation. The committee will hold its first meeting tomorrow, April 27th, where trustee Spalding will establish the charge. We expect the committee to execute its duties and make a recommendation to this board. At this time, we are going to call for a public comment, which is part of our meeting process.
Chair Jinks, point of order, I'd like to ask that we have new business section added to this agenda and all agendas moving forward for both this trustee meeting and for the committees.
We can take up, if we have time, new business at the end of the meeting, after the scheduled agendas addressed. Thank you.
It should be, by Robert's Rules of Order, it should be with every, every meeting.
We can address that, but today, if there's new business, time permitting, we will address it.
According to Robert's Rules of Orders, page 121, lines four through five, it needs to be in every meeting, that we allocate time for new business.
We'll allocate some time for new business.
Okay. Could we also add it to the agendas for every agenda moving forward so that we don't have to go through this process every time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, sorry, this is Ron. I would just like to ask our fellow board members if there is new business that they know of in advance of the meeting, if they could get that to maybe Christie so that we don't, we don't get, it can get on the agenda as opposed to all of the trustees being hit with new items without any opportunity to review materials and digest and think about them in advance. Thank you.
I think that's a proper request, so we will have to have new business come up and as it comes up, put it on the agenda. Is that, is that good, trustee Cristaldi?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. We permit people to speak for public comment, but we need your request to speak 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Today, we have had 54 people who have registered for public comment. Each commenter will have one minute to speak. Ms. Fitzpatrick will call your name, along with the next three commenters. At one minute, the mic will turn off and you will return to your seats, please, so the next speaker can take his or her turn. Due to the number of commenters, we are not able today to accommodate having speakers speak on behalf of someone else, so if you've signed up to speak, please come up to the podium when you're called and provide us with your comments. Ms. Fitzpatrick, if you can call the first name on the list, and there will be a countdown clock, which I think the speaker should be able to see, and at the end of one minute, we will have to turn the mic off for the next person.
So the first three will be Sonia Halman, then we have Amy Reid, and then Sonia Labador.
Socrates said, "The education should be the kindling of a flame and not the filling of a vessel," and that is exactly what you faculty here at New College do. But thanks to the Floridian regime, here we stand in the middle of history that threatens to extinguish that flame. Our state government has come in and claimed New College from its students, from its faculty, and from the staff without consent and with impunity. This Floridian regime wants to tell you what books you can read, what you can learn, and what you can do with your body, but most of all, who you can be. And I know for some of you now, in this, in this climate, existing, just existing, is an act of bravery that is beautiful and profound. And I know for these faculty, the superlative faculty of New College, getting up every morning in this purposely uncertain, cruel, and unprecedented environment and keeping the flame of curiosity burning is an act of resistance and courage that... I'm so proud to be a part of it. Rebecca Black, Lynn Zhang, Nastima Nagaz, Gerardo Toro Farmer, Ugo Viera Vargas. Their teaching, research, and community service have earned them tenure and promotion. New College was lucky to recruit them. I am honored to be their colleague. Gerardo, Lynn, and Becca engaged students in environmental STEM research. Gerardo is our one-person GIS program. Lynn integrates chemistry into our CYC curriculum, and I was proud to join her in 2021 on United We Stand, a panel in response to anti-Asian violence. Becca received a grant from the Petroleum Institute to enhance her lab, and she also stocks a food pantry for New College students. Ugo brings music to campus and showcases student performance. His website has an interactive musical map of Puerto Rico. Nastima's research on the history of the Islamic world has been featured in the Boston Globe and on NPR. She gave a great TED Talk in Orlando. Five fantastic scholar teachers who have earned tenure at New College. Honor and respect.
So we have Sonia Labador, and then following is Catherine Brien, and then Stephen Shipman.
This is a statement that is going to be read after me by seven, eight other colleagues. We, as members of the faculty of New College of Florida, urge the vote, the board, to vote in favor of tenure of our exceptional colleagues during this meeting. Their work over the past five years at New College has been nothing short of outstanding. Our colleagues are inspiring teachers, insightful researchers, and dedicated to New College. They have met all the requirements for tenure and correctly followed all the rules and procedures required of them. Will the board celebrate their accomplishments of our colleagues, or will you act as government puppet who pulls the rug out of, out from under our candidates by denying them further employment at New College?
Colleges and universities are not just for teaching. They are also the primary generators of scientific, historical, and creative discovery. Inherent to the role of professors, both teaching and scholarship, and our expertise as educators derives from the knowledge gained through that scholarship. Excellence in both is achieved only through the trust bestowed by the promise of intellectual and educational freedom. Tenure exists to combat indoctrination, a goal we apparently share. It protects faculty from the partisan whims that muddy truth-seeking. It provides the necessary agency to take the risks required for discovery. Tenure is a truly American ideal. Like the rights granted by our Constitution, it is founded in an unfettered and dogged commitment, above all else, to freedom from oppression and servitude. We cannot do what is asked of us otherwise.
We have Stephen Shipman, followed by Sarah Hernandez, followed by Chris Cottkey, and then Christopher Finney.
The protection of tenure is an essential part of the American university system, and even more broadly, of the American democratic ideal, protecting essential scholarship from undue political and economic influence. The academic freedom afforded by tenure allows researchers to follow lines of inquiry wherever they lead, resulting in a better, deeper understanding of society and the world. For academics, tenure offers the possibility of job security as a trade-off for low salaries and a difficult career path, and is necessary to attract qualified people to do research and to teach our students. Importantly, tenure is not guaranteed. Tenure review is a rigorous process involving an exhaustive evaluation by qualified academics in the areas of scholarship, teaching, and service. Our exceptional candidates were each hired with a promise that they would be granted a fair evaluation according to the clear procedure detailed in our collective bargaining agreement. Today, I urge the board to follow the provisions of our legally binding contract. Thank you.
Standing for tenure is an almost year-long process. The five candidates standing for tenure now began this rigorous vetting process in May 2022. They compiled substantial files with evidence of excellent teaching, active scholarship or creative work, and engaged service. All students, faculty, and staff were asked for letters, all of which were glowing. In September, experts from outside the college were asked to review the candidate's scholarly material. All of them recommended both tenure and promotion. They said yes. Through multiple levels of review at New College, the faculty also voted yes. Finally, the provost reviewed all the preceding recommendations and voted yes. The interim president also voted yes. So, on what grounds is the vote other than yes justified today?
There have been statements that candidates either can't or shouldn't stand for tenure early, but this is false. Candidates must stand in their sixth year, but plenty of strong candidates stand sooner if they've met the criteria for tenure, and this is not wrong. I myself stood for and was granted tenure in my fifth year just a few years ago, as have a number of my colleagues before and since, and traditionally, the Board of Trustees' meeting was a celebratory and largely ceremonial end of a long and rigorous process. Not granting tenure to these candidates today, who have followed the same legal processes as myself and other faculty members, creates an untenable double standard. This choice would create a precedent that would affect not only the president candidates, but all future candidates who are teaching now, and indeed, all future candidates for faculty positions at New College. Please vote as your official packets recommend to you to grant tenure. Thank you.
We have Christopher Finney, followed by Jocelyn Van Tool, and Kathleen, sorry, Kathleen Casto right after that.
Tenure is not a gift, but rather an indicator of loyalty by the candidate and a commitment to the future of the college. After tenure, faculty workload often increases, especially with respect to committee work and service to the greater good of the college. Our colleagues who decided to join New College did not assume they would get tenure automatically, but they made a career and life decision based on the promise that their cases would be evaluated fairly and on merit, not politics. It is perplexing that the rest of us were awarded tenure by following an established procedure, but our colleagues do not benefit from the same standards today.
Should the board deny tenure to these excellent candidates, the effects on our already shaky situation will be catastrophic and widespread. Without tenure, we will lose good faculty and fail to recruit new ones from all political viewpoints and in all fields. Many of our students will lose their academic advisors, their research mentors, their thesis advisors, and the faculty who remain will need to pick up the pieces. Majors like chemistry, marine biology, music, religion, and more will have trouble staffing required courses and advising students. These majors may well collapse. Current faculty will distrust administration even more than they do now. Students who have been admitted might not want to come anymore, and even more current students may leave. This is not a recipe for enrollment success.
Kathleen Casto, then we have David Gilman, and then Patrick McDonald.
Hi, untenured faculty member here. There are certainly more important hills to die on, no? A more noble cause? Is this really the thing you want to be remembered for? Today, I took down the evil system that made American universities the best in the world. Today, I showed those overworked and underpaid professors who's boss. Today, I considered the lives of five human beings who gave this place everything they had and more, who dared to dream, and I said, "Not today." A sad legacy, and surely not what you had hoped to achieve as a trustee. But you don't have to be a pawn in some larger game where no one wins. Each of you has the agency as an independent intellectual to do what is right for New College. Vote yes to tenure. Vote yes to freedom from indoctrination.
Computer science and data science at New College went from zero to 80 students in five years. To reach 1,200, we need six more successes like that. What will it take? I think we need to get and keep the best people. What will that take? I think, number one, let faculty hire faculty. They know what to look for. Number two, invite faculty to design the curriculum and teach what's, what they see fit. Strong and independent faculty are what attracts students. Number three, hire faculty who want to invest in our shared mission. The shared mission ensures that we focus on what students need. Four, let faculty say who should get tenure. They know their colleagues. Five, grant people the autonomy to do what they do best. Everyone, from students, to faculty, to staff, to administrators.
Here with Patrick McDonald, followed by Joshua Epstein, then Michael Belusch.
Since my arrival 28 years ago, there hasn't been a time when the college wasn't facing serious challenges. We've done best when we've acted as a community, and as an active part of the community, I've learned some important lessons. For example, I've learned that if the college is to survive, there's far more work for faculty to do than there are hours contracted to do it. Much of the surplus, things that include faculty roles in recruitment, retention, and placement of students, gets addressed because faculty choose to help, not because they're paid to. When, why do faculty choose to help? Because they believe in a shared mission and they trust in the processes that define academia broadly and New College in particular. Without clarity on curriculum and faculty hiring, many will focus their attention elsewhere and valuable resources will vanish at a critical time. Today, there's a lack of clarity with respect to mission, process, curriculum, and faculty hiring. It's within your...
Joshua Epstein, third-year economics student. I just wanted to start it off with a quote from Ronald Reagan. I just wanted to start it off with a quote from Ronald Reagan, who in 1961 said, "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it on to our children in the bloodstream. The only way they can inherit their freedom, we have known, is if we fight for it, protect it, defend it, and then hand it to them with the well-fought lessons of how they in their lifetime must do the same. And if you and I do this, then you and I may well spend our sunset years telling our children and our children's children what it was once like in America when men were free. I don't want to be the one to one day tell my kids what it was like when we had good, qualified professors in Florida, qualified professors that are required to ignite the minds of young individuals." I'm from Miami, and let me tell you, this state has some awesome talent in the pipeline, talent that I fear will go to states like New York and California. If we can't show them that we have professors that are qualified in their field, who have been teaching for a long time, and can ignite their children and their own minds, otherwise, we're going to be a state with a lot of uneducated folks, and a state with a lot of folks that don't make a lot of money that aren't going to be able to keep our--
Just want to announce the other ones. Okay, so we have Michael, and then Olivia Pierre, and then Alaska Miller, and Brendan Hirsch.
Okay. Hi, I'm Michael Bullish, a third-year transfer student in environmental science and anthropology. And I am here today to speak in support of the tenure of Dr. Gerardo Toro Farmer. He is the only professor here that teaches GIS, that is short for geographic information systems, a critical skill for natural science majors and all people trying to enter the workforce as professionals in multiple fields. He integrates physical science into his approaches, but also lets students work on projects related to other class or thesis work, and has even allowed us to access Esri's tutorials online, which is very important for developing critical GIS skills. Not only that, he is a patient and thoughtful professor. He helps students juggle their responsibilities as people, not only as students. He runs a lab, which employs students not only from New College, but other universities through the Environmental Discovery Awards Program, and he was my first summer employer. So my first summer job is thanks to him. So please consider supporting the tenure of Dr. Gerardo Toro Farmer.
Hello, my name is Olivia Paray, and I'm a second-year biology AOC with a slash in chemistry. I am here to speak in support of Dr. Black and Dr. Lynn, two professors that have provided me with indispensable experience over the past year. I study organic chemistry with Dr. Lynn. She is a dedicated and gifted teacher. Her courses helped me build a strong foundation for the lab work I have done with Dr. Black. I started in Dr. Black's lab last semester, doing research on catalysts for alcohol acceptorless dehydrogenation. Over spring break, I helped present a poster at the American Chemical Society Conference titled "Synthesis and Characterization of Orthenium II Complexes Bearing Bifep Type Liggins and a Chelating Phosphene Bromoarene Ligand." I am proud to have this experience as a second-year undergraduate student, which would not be possible without these excellent faculty. I urge you to tenure these professors who have provided me with excellent experience, and without whom my New College experience would not be the same.
Hi, I'm Alaska, or, hold on. Hi, I'm Alaska Miller, and I want to take my time today to implore you to consider what it means to be part of an institution of higher learning. As such, I'll be reading a quote from Michelle Faco. Education may well be, as of right, an instrument by which every individual in a society like our own can gain access to any kind of discourse, but we well know that in this distribution, in what it prevents and what it permits, it follows well-trodden bowlines of social conflict. Every educational system is a political means of maintaining or modifying the approach to discourse with the knowledge and powers it carries with it. I implore you to consider your need to invoke totalitarian measures onto our college to control our right to discourse. I stand here today in defiance of these measures. Finally, I want to publicly shame our president, who has shown nothing but apathy and disregard for our student body and our traditions, and to remind them that he is not welcome or wanted on this campus. Fuck you, Richard Cochran!
Please, please have him removed. You're out. Officer, please take him out. Thank you. Out. Next, we have Brendan Hirsch, Sheri Gorman, Elizabeth Alvez, and then Carol Lerner.
Maya Angelou once said, "When someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time." Let me read a tweet from our own Chris Ruffo. Quote, "We have successfully frozen their brand, 'Critical Race Theory,' into the public conversation and are steadily driving up negative perceptions. We will eventually turn it toxic as we put all of the various cultural insanities under this brand category. The goal is to have the public read something crazy in the newspaper and immediately think 'Critical Race Theory.' We have decodified the term and will recodify it to annex the entire range of cultural constructions that are unpopular with Americans. When someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time." Another quote from Ruffo at the Clément Institute in 2021. Quote, "People try to debate me into a lot of fights, saying, 'You don't even understand the true historical nature of Critical Race Theory,' and I just avoid these fights. I don't give a shit about this stuff," end quote. When someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time. I'm tired of this. Sometimes I spend so long thinking about this stuff, how I have to be fighting for the basic educational rights for myself and my friends, that I forget I'm a student. I have an essay due at midnight.
Your minute's up. Your minute's up. Please yield, your minute's up, please yield to the next speaker.
Teachers go into their profession to broaden their students' minds. We cannot say the same of this Board of Trustees who seek to create a narrow-minded group of teachers. When certain subjects or professors are censored and people are not allowed to talk or learn freely, it means they can't form their own opinions. This is higher education. It is important for faculty and students to be able to think freely and express themselves without fear of censorship. This is how we learn, and this is how we grow as individuals and as a society. The Constitution recognizes that people have different beliefs and values, and it protects our rights to express those beliefs without fear of persecution or discrimination. Bring on new students with different values if you believe that is not already happening, but don't change the curriculum or the faculty to suit only your values and beliefs."
So we have Sheri Gorman, Elizabeth Alvez, Alyssa Mitchell, and then Rodrigo Diaz.
So, we've been here before. In 1933, the Nazis took over the world's preeminent university in natural sciences, the Humboldt University in Berlin. It was the first university that had instituted academic freedoms to protect and shield their faculty. First off, the Nazis fired the president and replaced him with a crony. In their defense, at least he had a PhD. The Nazis ousted Jewish and social democratic faculty regardless of academic status or achievements. The good Germans were aghast and shouted, "Surely you can't," to which the Nazis said, "Watch us," and proceeded to oust even Albert Einstein from the Humboldt University. The Nazis banned 20,000 books of the university's library. They also burned them for special effect. Curricula, remaining faculty, and students were all mission-aligned, as our own trustee Ruffo is demanding. The Nazis called it gleis schaltung. And this speech will be continued by speaker number 39.
I'm not 39, so, different speech. I'd like to thank those members of this board who are prioritizing the needs of current students. They are not, as one of the new trustees has labeled them, collateral damage. The Board of Governors has informed us that you are accountable to two stakeholders, students and taxpayers. I am a taxpayer. You are accountable to me. And in fact, unless the law's been changed in the last 30 minutes, and Florida is now only collecting taxes from people who vote a certain way, you are accountable to all of us. So I have a question. It's wonderful that there is now money available for $10,000 scholarships for students. I'd like to know why that money isn't available to current students, only new students and transfer students? Because it seems like you don't want the current students to stay, and you need to bribe the new students to attend, which would be incredibly unethical. And since that money belongs to the people of Florida, not you, I want to know why all the students can't benefit from that new money. I look forward to your answer.
We have Rodrigo Diaz, Michael Penny, Hannah Homer, and David Bullish.
Trustee Lance Karp, you have seen anger at this podium, sir. Please understand that this emotion is a reaction to abuses of power. Richard Corcoran's name appeared in the media as President Oker's replacement before the meeting to consider firing President Oker had even begun. Why? Joelydi Rosario Hernández was fired from this college. Was it because Joelydi lives openly as a queer person? Now several faculty have been asked to withdraw their applications for tenure, sir. I could go on and on. Trustee Karp, you are a decent man. You are a brave man, sir. You defended Pat Oker in this room on January 31st. Sir, I beg you, please lend your voice and your vote to those on this campus who are being abused. The hostile takeover of New College does not have to continue with your consent. Thank you.
My home-school daughter enrolled at New College in the fall of '22 with the highest level of Bright Futures Scholarship. It's a wonderful benefit for us here in Florida. She worked hard for Bright Futures and her other scholarships, and then chose New College for the especially high quality of the faculty, and with PhDs. Tenure track and STEM faculty, the very best way of determining the quality of a university as parents is to look at the quality of the faculty, their degrees, and their research. By denying STEM faculty tenure, you are destroying the very strong science and technology programs at NCF. This should concern students and parents, even if you agree that there's too much diversity here, because STEM is where the high-paying jobs are, and this is destroying the ability of the local community in Sarasota and Florida to get a local, strong STEM education. Please do not make STEM education at this valuable local school collateral damage in your crusade. Thank you.
I am a New College parent and a scientist with expertise in higher education. I am here to support the professors up for tenure and to contradict statements by some here and in Tallahassee about the mediocrity and disposability of current students and faculty. My son turned down admission at Swarthmore and Reed Colleges to come here because of the excellence of STEM education's self-directed learning style. He never would have taken the, what is it called, the CLIT exam, and he never would have gone to Hillsdale College. He has received excellent instruction in chemistry from Dr. Black and Dr. Lynn, including an ISP with Dr. Black, which led to an extremely competitive federal REU fellowship, look it up, at North Dakota State University last summer. His education, his achievements have been exceptional, not mediocre. These students and faculty are not trash to be thrown out. Stop treating them that way.
We have David Bullish, followed by Stephanie Bullish, Mike Sanderson, and then Jonah Miller, Jonno Miller, I apologize.
My name is David Bullish. I'm a retired Army Colonel, a registered nurse, a lifelong Republican, but most of all, the father of a New College student. Military service personnel defend our constitutional freedoms against enemies, foreign and domestic. The latter is increasingly a threat, both overtly and covertly. The suppression of academic freedoms has historically been the initial steps of autocrats and dictators. Book censorship limits free thought and critical thinking. Limiting freedom of thought only serves those trying to control, dominate, and suppress democracy. This board should be focused on supporting the students, both present and future, by improving infrastructure, food service, and security. Right now, there are students who are ill from mold in your rooms. You should be fighting mold, not the outstanding academic environment of New College.
I am the parent of a third-year student. I want to thank the faculty who have contributed to its success at New College and to stand in support of tenure. The summer after my son transferred here, he received a paid internship in marine biology with Dr. Toro Farmer. The following year, he was awarded a competitive Boren Scholarship and spent the fall semester in Senegal at the Western Africa Research Center. None of this would have been possible without the expertise and dedication of faculty such as Dr. Toro Farmer, one of the professors whose tenure should be confirmed today. How can a newly-appointed board deny tenure to dedicate professors who have spent five years teaching at New College? All were approved for tenure by their peers and the New College administration. All five are essential to the student's academic success. Students came here to learn. They should not have to worry if professors and the classes they need to graduate will be available next year or the years after, but that is the situation you have created. Let your conscience speak. Confirm--
My name is Mike Sanderson. I came to New College in 1999 from Miami Palmetto Senior High School. First, I want to assure you that all my comments are sincere and offered from my perspective as an alum who was deeply involved in the setting up of the independent New College, including often attending these boards. However, given the difficulty of a one-minute comment, I've submitted an expanded version of this and posted it on mikesand.com. I asked today to speak today about the Accountability Plan. As an alum, I asked the board to look at graduation rates, because to alums, every student who tried and didn't graduate on time is a friend and classmate whose adult life was delayed, hobbled, or even shattered. Everyone knows New College's graduation rate is dragged down by the onerous thesis process. Everyone knows it drives students away before and during the thesis process, even when students do complete it, it's supposed to be some kind of ordeal. I urge the board to boost the graduation rate this year, and also to ensure students who substantially completed requirements are allowed to walk and are not unilaterally denied the right to do so. Thank you.
Just going to announce the next couple. So we have Jonno Miller, Tamara Solum, Juliana Parr, Pamela Parr, and then Joyce White.
Thank you. I'm Jonno Miller, speaking today as president of NCF Freedom. I'm speaking on Agenda Item 9, dealing with tenure. Clearly, questions of tenure and promotion intersect with another agenda item, Draft Accountability Plan. Your Third Accountability Plan strategy calls for adding world-class faculty. If you vote to deny tenure to qualified individuals today, help me understand how we're going to attract and add world-class faculty for offering them a situation in which they will be the hardest-working faculty in the SUS, not just teaching classes, but tutorials, ISPs, thesis advising, time-consuming narrative evaluations, and research. They're also the most underpaid faculty in the SUS. And then, these applicants would be able to see how qualified faculty with exemplary records have been treated with prior tenure decisions. Thank you.
Disruptor event, I'm an event disruptor and helicopter parent, apparently. Funny, my daughter, a 2020 alum, is in Los Angeles, living her best life in a state that has a governor that supports academic freedom. Also, didn't our governor say he was for parental rights? I guess he's only for our rights when we're aligned with the right-wing ideology and agenda. So today, what are we speaking about? The rejection of tenure for four, five faculty members who have already been approved for tenure by their peers? These are faculty who have, who are assisting current students with their field of study and thesis projects. Three of them are STEM professors. By choosing not to honor these tenure applicants, you are risking accreditation and hurting our students. In addition, how do you expect to draw talented individuals in academia to New College if they know they may not be eligible in the future for tenure? Meanwhile, we will lose the backing of a reputable organization so that you can go shopping in a place--
Your time's up. Thank you.
I would ask that my time not begin until all Board of Trustees members are paying attention to the speakers.
I'm Juliana Parave-Lagoyev. I'm speaking as a private citizen. I'm a New College alum and faculty member at Johns Hopkins-- I’m a New College alum and faculty member at Johns Hopkins University. If this board has an ethical compass, how can it endorse the canceling of positive tenure decisions by a president unwilling or unable to articulate a single academic reason for his decisions? The core value of a liberal arts college is the use of reason, of rationality, of evidence. Endorsing capricious, unreasoned decisions to destroy the professional lives of scholars would tell us all that the core value of liberal arts is the last thing the board actually stands for. Perhaps that’s why not everybody pays attention to the speakers. Can you explain to each scholar you are judging today exactly what it is about their publications, teaching, or service that merits overturning the positive judgments of scholars both within and beyond New College? If you cannot, how in good conscience can you possibly override those judgments?
We have Pamela, Joyce White, Brendan Stewart, and then Aliana Salazar.
I’m a tax-paying parent of a New College student. I oppose your government-controlled academic program changes. You are imposing a new academic plan without informed consent. You are violating my parental rights regarding our school choice. Steve Jobs wanted academic freedom. New College nurtures academic freedom. We chose this. New College wants students to create new knowledge in topics they value. We chose this. We do not consent to denying or deferring tenure for qualified professors, canceling STEM areas, lectures on the supremacy of Western civilization, abolishing diversity of thought and community. These actions erode academic freedom. We chose a program that values diversity, equity, and inclusion, not conformity, oppression, and exclusion. My rights and values should not be.
Thank you. Your time’s up. Please yield to the next speaker.
We will be shutting down low-performing, ideologically-captured academic departments and hiring new faculty. Chris Ruffo, February 28th. Chris, where is the political ideology in New College’s outstanding STEM program in biology and chemistry? This is censorship. Eddie Spear requested in February that the board declare a state of financial emergency during which it could terminate the contracts of tenured faculty. This is censorship. Dr. Lynn is my daughter’s current organic chemistry professor. I don’t think she’s ever had a tougher, more demanding course or teacher, yet the respect and admiration she has for Dr. Lynn is widely apparent, and I know she will be well-prepared for her future studies, that is, if she’s given the opportunity to do so. Your disruptive agenda is clearly not in the best interest of your students. I myself hold a doctorate in psychology, my husband a PhD in electrochemistry. We know what excellent academic standards are and how precious academic freedom are. Is, tenure and academic freedom go hand in hand. Each of the professors up for tenure are unquestionably qualified. If you deny tenure, your obvious censorship is not the last.
Thank you. Your time is up. I need you to yield to the next speaker, please. Thank you.
Brendan Stewart, and then Aliana Salazar, Tracy Pharo, and Matt Senegal.
My name is Brayden Stewart, and I am a second-year mathematics and religion student here at New College. Choosing a college is something like choosing a home. I was given the choice between a cookie-cutter suburban shack with a drab paint job and an unsightly emerald-green sprawl and a waterfront bungalow designed by some eccentric in the 60s. I, among many others, am proud to have chosen the bungalow. Could it use a few renovations? Perhaps some quite literal renovations are in order, but the spirit of the place must be preserved. Interim President Corcoran’s recent strong-arming of five tenure candidates out of positions that they have rightfully earned and attempts to placate the student body with, you know, caps and gowns, which notably, New College students don’t wear at graduation, are found to be utterly unacceptable. The student body does not support these things, and we do not support you.
Hi, my name is Aliana Salazar. I am the mom of a New College student. I have to say, I was really angry when this started, and now I’m entertained. I feel like I’m an extra on the set of Waterworld, all right? The biggest boondoggle, the biggest failure in entertainment history. I work in the entertainment industry, and so to see this happening, no one’s smart enough to stand up and say, “Whoa, what a mistake. You are turning a top-rated academic institution into a third-rate athletic program while you’re spending taxpayer dollars to go recruit for the Bad News Grifters baseball team across the country.” We have an exceptional student body here, and they should be the ones receiving the funding here. And to say, “I am not a person of faith, but I have faith that karma will come for all of you, and that by hitching your ride to a failed presidential wannabe robot who’s not going to go anywhere, your careers will end with his,” and the irony of the Senate Ethics Committee confirming you on the same day that Tucker Carlson got shown the door is epic, and that says, America’s had enough, and we’re not going to tolerate that hatred or that racism. That, your one song that you’re playing is going to play in this room, but the rest of America won’t hear it. At the end of the day, you guys will be out, and it’ll be cold. That’s how it works.
Not even sure I can follow that. This is from a current, non-binary NCF student and also the child of Tracy Pharo and Sheri Benedict. I have always been and always will be proud of my two moms and my family. You call me and my members, members of my family groomers and freaks. You tell me and many other children and adults that we shouldn’t exist because of our gender, our sexuality, or our skin color. We walk like you, talk like you, and live in the same world as you. We have done nothing to hurt you, so why do you fear us? I believe you fear anything or anyone that is different, so I ask of you, no, I beg of you. Please let the faculty continue to teach the truth and knowledge. They have shown repeatedly, shown us repeatedly how remarkable and superior they are at their jobs. Please stop hurting us because we are different, and please let us live. And as a parent, I say, DeSantis, this college president, and the newly-appointed Board of Trustees have made this personal, and you want a war. That’s how you operate. I can tell you right now, you will not get one. Instead, we will continue to do what is best. We will pursue the truth fearlessly and without favor. We will give voices, and continue to shine a light on choralism and interruption.
Please yield the microphone to the next speaker. Thank you.
Matthew Senegal, Gins Alvez.
As a new transfer student, I have had the luck to enroll in Dr. Toro Farmer’s coral reef ecology class. Just in this semester, I have learned just how diverse, beautiful, and crucial coral reefs are to our environment. Dr. Toro Farmer was the first professor to encourage me to branch out and create a project studying the impacts of sharks on these ecosystems. I look forward to presenting this data to him in class. Not that y’all care. We’re extremely fortunate to have Dr. Toro Farmer, and I have board, and if this board decides to reject his tenure, you will show just how little you care about the education and the student body on this campus. Now, in regards to these new perks, if you think the student body, both current and incoming, doesn’t see the inflated scholarships and free food options for the bribes they are, you seriously underestimate us. Personally, I’m glad I transferred early, as I don’t ever want to hear, “I was bribed for my education.” I do have one question for this board, however, and you know who this goes to. That investigation into my religious club, how’s it going?
Gins Alvez, Galen Reisdick, Betsy Braden, Rod and Robin Williams. I’m sorry. Gins Alvez, Galen Reisdick, and then we have Betsy Braden, Robin Williams, and then Lisa Jenkmeja.
It is eerie to observe and realize how our new president and new trustees follow the Nazi playbook step by step, as instructed by Governor DeSantis. The leader’s word is our command, is what the Nazis called this leadership principle. As a direct response to the damage the Nazis inflicted on the German university system, the American Association of University Professors introduced the concept of tenure in 1940 with a statement of principles on academic freedom and tenure. This statement holds that the common good depends upon the free search for truth and its free exposition, and one would think that Mr. Spear, our self-declared defender of the truth, would come to its defense. Is it any wonder that DeSantis and his resident henchman Corcoran are going after tenure with such vengeance? They know it will stand in their way. Mr. Corcoran, grant tenure to these professors.
I’m currently a student at New College. I’m currently working as a tutor in the QRC, and I’m having significant issues with that. Overall, I find that the trustees are not interested in the issues that students are facing and are more interested in whatever issues they seem to want to go for. Currently, I’m working over 15 hours a week, and I’m being asked to do more because there are four classes that don’t have TAs, because nobody wants to work for $11 an hour, and I’m being told that we don’t have the funding for it, and yet I’m seeing that we are able to pay Mr. Corcoran his salary and that we’re able to hire new baseball coaches that really nobody wants. Our cost of, cost of transportation is $1,100 a year. Mr. Corcoran was given $12,000, and it costs at least $5,000. We have a disability office that makes it far more difficult to get accommodations than is necessary, and are forcing meal plans on students with allergies that don’t, can’t qualify for it, essentially. And our music program is far paling in comparison to SEF, and so I encourage you to look into these things. Thank you.
My name is Betsy Braden. I’m a parent of a New College student. We chose New College for its academic excellence and 12:1 student-to-teacher ratio. My daughter, who is trans, found a safe place to study. At the Moms for Liberty Summit last Friday, Corcoran gave an update on New College. He said he wasn’t sure that the five professors deserved tenure due to the college changing. When someone asked about what to do about trans students on campus gathering together, he skirted around this question and acted like these students don’t exist. The trans students have the right to exist and thrive and be supported, and be supported by their college president. You can’t ignore their existence. Professors who went through a five-year approval process deserve to receive tenure. Give them 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 tenure. The nation’s watching, the tide’s turning, your extremist overreach isn’t popular. While Ruffo advocates laying siege to institutions, it’ll fail. The Ziegler’s and DeSantis took a hit when Hillsdale’s consultancy, Vermillion, was rejected 3:2 by the Sarasota School Board. Americans know it’s a lie when the governor talks freedom while taking it away. People don’t like book, abortion, gay, and trans bans. It’s not a coincidence you choose to eliminate science faculty. Science isn’t indoctrination like Hillsdale’s curriculum. The scientific method demands experimentation and data that support hypotheses. A professor of Holocaust history recently wrote that educating against hate isn’t enough. To understand the Holocaust, you have to look at those who put their own professional material gain first. Look in the mirror, those of you on the board who go along with these fascist policies. You’re culpable, but you still have a choice. Have the backbones vote for tenure for the five faculty members today and take the stand against war and academic praise.
Please show your respect for the speakers that have waited to be called to the podium. Thank you.
Next, we have Lisa Jenkmeja, followed by David Land, Sharon Ramey, Sheri Benedict.
I will be speaking today for my daughter, Rosemary Mejia. Last name’s Mejia. This is my daughter. My daughter, during her time at New, she says she acquired 164 credit hours. 120 is the least amount for a bachelor’s degree, according to the Department of Education. A master’s averages between 30 and 40 credit hours. So, on her own, by her own choice, she got a master’s degree in here because she loved the professors. The professors were what kept her and made her take these, didn’t make her take the classes. She loved the school.
New College recently launched an intercollegiate athletic department. Although I’m a lifetime three-sport high school and adult league athlete, such an initiative is premature without further evaluation. The Draft 2023 Accountability Plan includes two references to athletics. One, to meet student expectations, we must add an athletics program, and two, students will be drawn to our campus with addition of amenities that enhance their quality of life, including a new investment in athletics. BOG regulations state multi-year work plans should be compliant with the college’s mission and strategic plan. The athletic-related language in the Draft Accountability Plan is consistent with neither. This new program was seemingly launched without trustee approval. College regulations allow the president to administer an intercollegiate athletics program, but do not authorize him to establish one unilaterally. There appears to be no in-depth business plan and budget.
Sorry, sir, your, your, your minute’s up, but feel free to submit your comments, the rest of your comments. We will take them in a pendulum.
Have you ever had to change your plans, your mind, and your actions at the very last minute? No preparation? My talk has been given by many others about how qualified the faculty candidate is before you are. It’s what I’ve heard that changed my plans. I am hoping that you’ve listened and heard how important granting tenure to qualified people is as an indication of the strength of New College and your commitment to its future. Please change your plans, your mind, and your actions today.
We have Sheri Benedict, Anne McAllister, Amanda Gillian, and Bruce Benedict.
So many lives have been destroyed since January 6th at New College. The loss of former President Ockler on January 31st board meeting, the abolishment of outreach and inclusion, the firing of Chief Diversity Officer after the February 28th meeting. Students and non-students all over are being harassed at work, if people even think they are gay or trans. I’ve been harassed even at a board meeting in the bathroom of all places. I’m pretty sure at 52-years-old, I know if I’m in the, what bathroom I need to go to. Even at the local Target, I was called a groomer while carrying my one-year-old granddaughter. These are words that came directly from Ron DeSantis and Chris Ruffo. Thank you. This hate needs to stop. This is part of the reason why my child chose this campus, because it was a safe place for her to go, where she could felt accepted and where she could be. We need to grant a place, a safe space for our kids to be.
My name is Anne McAllister, and I am a third-year biochemistry student. I’m here today to speak in support of Dr. Rebecca Black. Last year, I took Organic Chemistry 1 Last year, I took Organic Chemistry I and II with Dr. Black. In that time, I learned many valuable skills, including how to think more critically about the world around me, how to apply the things I learned in my textbook to real-world problems, and how to effectively communicate scientific research. I also learned how to accurately track experiments and data in the lab, which helped me thrive in a summer research internship at one of the best public research universities in the country. Dr. Black has helped me improve as a student and scientist, and I know that the skills and knowledge that I gained from her classes will help me achieve my future goals. One of my favorite things about New College is the relationships I have been able to cultivate with my professors. They have served as excellent mentors and wish to see me succeed in my educational endeavors. By approving Dr. Black's application for tenure and that of all the professors currently up for tenure, the board is ensuring that current and future students will benefit from their teaching knowledge and mentorship.
Thank you.
I'm Amanda Gilliland, and I'm here today as a New College alum and a Sarasota business owner. There are four specific questions I'd love to get answered from today's meeting. One, what are admissions and enrollment numbers this year versus last year? Two, what new groups are being targeted for enrollment and why? Three, who is reviewing admissions applications and what criteria have changed? Four, when will President Corcoran hold a town hall with students and alums? Also, I will now share a note from a friend and tenure-track faculty member. Large universities can afford to deny tenure just because. We cannot afford this, and my colleagues deserve your support since they are outstanding. We are a small college with low salaries in a place with a high cost of living? You've said that faculty here are great. Professors like me coming down the pipeline are deciding if this is the place where they can have a future.
And we have Bruce, followed by Ari Webel, Stephen Russell, Hayden Garbes, and Ariel Campbell.
My name is Bruce Bennett. I graduated from here 50 years ago. I'm a resident of Florida, taxpayer of Florida, and I am appalled by what you're doing. You're not just hurting my college, you're hurting our state. You're constricting an education that allows and helps people think of all views, critically assess all points of view, and you're trying to replace it with your own orthodoxy. This isn't the kind of education that will bring families and businesses to Florida because they like our workforce and our way of being. This isn't the kind of education that will prepare students for a complicated future we can't know. Attacking tenure and academic freedom hurts all of Florida. You're clipping the wings of every student's future. Stop.
Okay. Hi. Great job deciding to ask for accreditation with the Higher Learning Commission. The mission of this accreditor is to, quote, "advance the common good through quality assurance of higher education as leader in equitable, transformative, and trusted accreditation in the service of students and member institutions." Gaining accreditation with the Higher Learning Commission will require that our processes and activities demonstrate inclusive and equitable treatment of diverse populations and that our college recognizes the human and cultural diversity and protects students with growth opportunities and lifelong skills to live and work in a multicultural world. This is a huge improvement from S A C S-C O C, which has no guidelines related to D A I whatsoever. How does that sound to you, Mr. Ruffo? Also grant our professors tenure. Thank you very much.
To the majority of this B O T and President Corcoran, our words are fallen on deaf ears. You are here for a political agenda, to execute a political agenda and for your personal gain. The First Amendment does not permit the state of Florida to muzzle its university professors, impose its own orthodoxy of viewpoints, and cast us all into the dark. That is exactly what you are doing. To you previous board members, the horror of Nazi Germany existed because of good people falling in line. Vote with your conscience. Do the right thing.
My name is Hayden Garbes, and I'm one of the current co-chairs of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion on the N C S A. We are here today in support of the professors approved for tenure and current degree programs. We condemn how our trustees have instilled a culture of fear on this campus from dismantling our D E I office, working toward ending our gender studies program, and by ignoring the true values of our campus. We know that getting rid of the five cherished professors in a variety of our degree programs would cause devastating harm to our institution, known as a place to foster and engage in different opinions and as a place for free speech, which some may call an actual American value. This hostile takeover continues to impact so many of us here where the chance for a typical semester has been hallmark by constant phases of grief. It feels as though students, staff, and faculty who have spent years working towards building a collective New College have been swept by a moving rug without the consideration of where we all come from. And to the professors who were threatened by Corcoran, Dr. Rebecca Black, Dr. Linz Young, Dr. Nassima Nagaz, Dr. Arado Toro Farmer, and Dr. Hugo Viera Vargas, you are our New College, and they won't be able to take that away from us.
My name is Oralie Campbell, and I'm the other co-chair of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for our student government. And before I get started, I also want to mention that this week is Back Week, where all the thesis-ing students come together and show the work that they've done with the help of our grateful faculty members. And I want to ask President Corcoran if you've ever been to one back this week. Probably not. Anyways, I'll get started. I am grateful to the professors who continue to believe in me even on days when I cannot believe in myself, because New College hasn't just been about the students, but the professors who ask us, asked me to question elements of my reality and the limits placed on us. I wouldn't be here today if the teachers and mentors I had wouldn't have pushed the shy kid in the corner to ask for more from her life. I'm worthy to ask for a diverse education, worthy to challenge limiting and traditional beliefs where education wasn't originally a place for people like me. We need to protect our faculty and students of life, and we're just looking and fighting to give students a chance.
We have now concluded the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will proceed with the agenda following a brief break for the trustees. We ask everybody who plans to remain here to remain in your seats while we take that break.
Christy, did you notice Kessler's here? Okay.
Yep. He's on bottom.
Okay. Okay.[1095.73]
Hi, can you take your seats, please, trustees? Trustees?
You get shocked?
Somebody got shocked. Thank you. Everybody, please take your seats. If you're going to be staying through the meeting, please sit down. Okay, we're back in the Board of Trustees meeting. Please. Thank you. Okay, trustees, we're at the point of the meeting where we have a consent agenda. You've been provided with the action items to review. And at this point, I would ask if there is a motion that anyone wants to make to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to give an attaboy to the staff for having a data integrity audit with no findings. That takes a lot of work and a lot of cooperation, and that's truly extraordinary. So I just wanted to offer that commendation.
Thank you. Then, if there's no other discussion, there's been a section, a second. Do we have a vote to approve the consent agenda and items accepted on it?
Aye.
Aye.
Call the roll. Let's just do it. Yeah, call the roll.
Trustee Bowerline?
Aye.
Trustee Karp?
Yes.
Trustee Keenan?
Yes.
Trustee Kessler?
Yes.
Trustee Lipinski?
Yes.
Trustee Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Ruffo?
Yes.
Trustee Ruiz?
Yes.
Trustee Spalding?
Yes.
Trustee Spear?
Yes.
Chair Jenks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cristaldi?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have the board approval. At this point, on the agenda, we're opening it up to the president's report, and I would now invite our interim president, Richard Corcoran, to say a few words, please.
Thank you. I'll try to, again, stay along the same lines as I talked about last time, because I think the prioritization is where we're at, is number one. And you see that in the accountability plan that's coming before you next. But number one is, and when I meet with staff, when I meet with administration, myself, faculty, the mantra is simply student, student, students. If we grow in students, this institution will not only stabilize, it will be, it will thrive for the years to come. And one of the things I say is, and I would even say to you as trustees, you know, what's, if I said, "What's your position at New College?", and you say, "I'm a trustee, I'm a trustee", et cetera, and I'd say, "No, your job is to recruit, help recruit students. Help us bring students in here." And if we all, faculty, staff, administration, trustees, do that well, then we have the luxury of being an interim president, or a trustee, or a faculty member. And as far as the student recruitment goes, how do you grow that? We've consulted with presidents from very successful colleges from around the country, some very successful colleges here. And it's basically, you grow your co-curriculars, you grow your academics, you grow your, and a perfect example is Ringling College. They had a new president that came in, they had about 500 or 400 students. That, also, a JD, by the way, an attorney, he came in, he added co-curriculars. He said, "We're going to add this degree, this degree, this degree, and this degree", and now they have 1,500-plus students. They're expecting a freshman class of 500. And they raised somewhere between $15 million and $20 million a year, and almost 100% of that is from this community. As a juxtaposition, we've, our largest, second-largest class in the history of New College was last year. It was 249 people. Keep in mind that the largest was maybe three, three or four, 11 more, maybe 261. Almost every other year, it is somewhere around 200, most of the time below. And that's just not sustainable. And, and so, how do you do that? You do that with those co-curriculars. You also do it with extracurriculars. And we've talked to, and you've heard some comments today, so far, just in adding three sports, women's and men's, we're pushing 80 applicants in probably 30 days. Of those 80 applicants, I think 15 have been accepted. So where do we stand vis-à-vis with these, you know? And then, the second criteria is money. You know, and that's why we emphasize over and over, money, 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 after student, student, students. And so, we, you know, I'll be in Tallahassee, I'll be on a plane tomorrow at 6:00, I'll go back up there, they're finishing the last week. Right now, I'd say we're somewhere in the ballpark of, and again, this is politics, so I hate to say these statements, but I do want you to understand that I think right now, we stand somewhere around $45 million, counting the 15 we got initially, in one, in probably be a 90 to 120-day period. Outstanding, never been done before at New College, game changer for all the things that we want to do. Second is, that's the, that's where I think we stand minimally. So hopefully, I'll go back up there. I might stay through the weekend, I think the last signee die is on Tuesday. But there's a real chance that that additional $25 million could be an additional 35, 45, whatever. We had a great day at the Capitol. Many people here went. Trustee Keenan went, trustee Lipinski went, we had other students, we had alums who are also good donors, trustee Spear went, Chair Jenks went. We had meetings with the Speaker of the House, with the appropriations Chair of the House, appropriations Chair of the Senate. We had a meeting with the Senate President's Office, we met with the Chief of Staff and the Policy Director for Education with the Governor's Office, and we went to them with, as you guys have seen, we basically said, "We're thankful, we're grateful, it's game-changing what you're giving us, but if we could have 20, 20, 20, recurring, non-recurring, and PICO, which is construction costs, what we're really looking for is right out of the gate", pardon the phrase, because it's, you know, it's, you know, so sillyly used so many times, but we need shock and awe money. We need shock and awe so we can come here and do all the things necessary to win. But that goes back to, that money, money, money leads to that second criteria. You have co-curriculars, you have extracurriculars, you have money, if you can give scholarships. So we've gone, you know, and to the point that someone raised, I just want to be very clear. The admissions process is still the same. One of the, some of the students that we're going after, obviously, we're going after student athletes now because of our sports, and it's been very successful. But we also went back, so we, when we came onboard, there was 1,200, I think, applications of kids who had applied here, been accepted already, long before any of us new people participated, already been accepted. And we went through all those 1,200 applications, and we started sending scholarships out to those folks. Unfortunately, it's a very bright applicant pool, and so, a lot of them, you know, they say, "Well, I got into University of Florida, I got into Florida State, and that was my first choice", and we weren't. And so, we've lost a lot of them that, and so, as we reach out to them, and we email them, we've sent them letters, we've given them texts, but, the point being, is we're growing that pool. It's no, it's not just sitting there, we are growing that pool, which goes to the third point, to get students, is we have to have the best recruiting office, and they all have to be communicating and working synchronously in perfection. And so, they, I'll give it to the admissions, our registrar's office, our financials aides office, everyone is in overdrive, and we're starting to see results. So, vis-à-vis, I think we're, I'm going to give you, because it changes every day, another five, 10 enrollees. So, I think, vis-à-vis last year, we hit a peak of below the second-largest class in the history of New College of 249. That's what we track, we're tracking that. And so, three weeks ago, we were down 36% on that number. Today, we stand at down 24%, and it's dropping precipitously. At the current dropage rate, we'll be in the positives, which would suggest an enrollment over 249, which would be the second or largest class ever in the history of New College. And we're doing it with those method, methodologies. What does that mean to, to the well-stated comment by one of the presenters? What does that mean to, we're also tracking where we stand vis-à-vis over the last 10 years in terms of application scores, GPAs, all of those things, to make sure that the core and the corpus of New College, that has always been there and been reputational, reputationally excellent in terms of GPAs and SATs and ACTs are all maintained. That will, and if we can do that this year, it is game changer. It is simply unequivocally game changer, because we are doing it in a 90-day cycle, with most of us landing here in the last, you know, eight weeks. Give this team an entire year where we can start going to campuses, going to superintendents, going out there and getting in bidding wars for the top 10, the top 1% of these students, none of them are going to be going to comparable liberal arts schools out of the state of Florida, they will all be coming to New College. So I would anticipate, whatever the number is for this year in our student enrollment, which I am very confident right now, we are closing in on the second-largest class ever, whatever that is, the following year, I would expect that number to grow by 150 people or more. I think we'll start competing with numbers like Ringling's trying to get to 500, I think we'll start to compete with those kinds of freshman class. If we do that, it suggests to, not only the legislature, but to donors around this country, that we are on the verge of a liberal arts school that is not only surviving but thriving and pushing the, or knocking on the door of a 2,000-student campus. If we do that, you will see our revenue skyrocket, you'll see our donations skyrocket, our foundation endowment skyrocket, and how do we do that? The second part I want to give you an update on is, clearly, we're always going to look to recruit additional faculty. You know, one of the presenters made, and it's well said, what helps recruit students? When you have world-class faculty that are renowned, and that are great, that helps attract faculty. We are attracting faculty from all over the country, from every elite university in the country, and, and when we do that, that'll also help us over the next, you know, six months or so, and let me backtrack before I say this, I had a meeting here in this room on Wednesday, thanks to trustee Lipinski, he put together where I could come and speak to the faculty, I spoke to the faculty for well over an hour, we talked about numerous questions, we talked about all the changes, what's out there, and we're doing our best to, and I told them, what we're trying to do is get to a foundational level of where we are, where we stand, and what, what can we do around that foundation, around that core, that, to the speaker's point, strengthens the ability of students to want to come here and want to participate. And so, we're working with them. I think what's going to happen in terms of the faculty, in terms of the core curriculum that's being discussed quite a bit, we've had submissions from our existing faculty on core curriculum, we all know that's the direction that we're going, and we all know that that will strengthen New College and help us in the future. It's now just working on exactly what does that look like. You'll see in the accountability plan is what we know, we think that when you have a career, a core curriculum, and it's based on the great courses of time, but it's also married with taking our students and separating them, which we do now very, very well, but it's just not, we don't necessarily brand well, and it doesn't apply to necessarily all students. But if we can get those students ready, so I don't care if you graduate with a great degree in anthropology, you've taken those great courses, but then also marrying it with some sort of core curriculum of career preparedness. And now, I don't care if it's a student that graduates from liberal arts school that's supposed to be great, anywhere in the country, that applicant comes and applies for a job, I'm just going to say moat marine, and it's a marine biology job, and someone, you know, and let's say moat marine's in California, it doesn't matter, I don't want to have even geographical bias. And someone from New College with a marine biology graduates, and they're sitting there and they're interviewing, and what our graduate has is not only the great knowledge and wisdom that this liberal arts education provides, but it also has the technique, it also has the skills that is an add-on, an advantage. I think when we perfect those two things, which we'll hopefully do, and I want to thank Brad Thiessen, has been beyond wonderful, he's our interim provost, he's been going, you know, just through all of the different concepts. When we do that, I think that we'll be able to, and so, once we get, when we get, we're getting that foundation, I think in the next seven, 14 days, we'll start getting with the faculty, walking the faculty through this. I think they're very, very knowledgeable, and, in many ways, despite sometimes what we necessarily hear, excited. A lot of them are excited, they think it's an add-on for New College, they don't think it changes who we are, our identity, or anything like that. It's just a strengthening of New College in a direction that we, that we ought to go, and which ultimately leads to a better product, and a better career path, and a better life for our students. And so, we're going down that path, and I think that's going really well. So, and I'll continue to give the admissions updates, and, and, but just, I think right now, given the trajectory we're on, we're down 33% in three weeks, in terms of the negative off, over last year's numbers. At that growth rate, going through the end of May, we'll be in the positives, which is, again, it's just astounding to even be discussing having record enrollment, and, given the tumultuous times that we have found ourselves in, and, and only being here in the short, in the short term. The other thing I do want to say, on the consent agenda, I want to be very, very clear to this, because what we're trying to do, and I give you the updates, so I don't want to go over them extensively, but I can tell you, and we'll keep giving you those updates, if this legislative session ends well, we'll immediately turn our focus on private donations at the foundation, I think that's going to go very well. We have some updates on that for you here in short order, very positive. We're going to do record amounts in the, in the, in the foundation. As a whole, the foundation, and we've made a lot of changes that were necessary, although difficult, but the foundation, year over year, if I was to take a 10-year look, has averaged about $2.5 million in revenues, and in some years, and maybe even recently in most years, we're spending more than $2.5 million. That's not a path to success, and that doesn't lead to more scholarships and more opportunities for our students. And again, juxtaposing, because they're right here, they're right across the street, and they were, found themselves in a similar situation a decade ago, give or take, but the new president down there raises $15 to $20 million a year, literally, he would say 100%, I'm going to qualify it, because I just, you know, but I'll say it's virtually 100% from the Sarasota community, we're raising $2.5 million. That, and honestly, I, obviously, I'm biased, I think that if, if they're doing 15 to 20, New College should be doing 50 to 75, and we'll get there. But I think that's a significant advantage, and, and we'll be there in short order in terms of our fundraising, and we'll turn our attentions to that right after this legislative session comes to a close. But on that front, in the consent agenda, you will see that we are altering, every aspect of student life is being altered. We're going to, the campus is going to be excellent, our food services will be excellent. You saw in the consent agenda, the food service, 100% of that increase will be borne by the college itself and the trustees and the board, 100%. Not one piece will be passed on. But that gives us far more options, far more opportunities, far more time of the food service that we're able to give to our students. So, I would just say, in the next 60 days, we'll hopefully have a great update, hopefully we'll work well with our faculty. The only thing we've talked about with the faculty is not, is going through the processes, but obviously, we're in a compressed timeframe, so instead of something, if something's maybe 30 days, it might need to be 10. If something's 20, it might need to be 15, whatever those numbers are, but we want to get it done, and we want to get it implemented. And of course, because of existing students, and because even our incoming freshmen, they are in, will be under the existing system, to the extent they want to be under the entire existing system, of course, we would honor that, that's a contract that we have with them. Even the applicants that are applying and had applied before any of this is even thought of, anticipated, or made, they would, whatever we recommend would be 100% voluntary on their part. We would strongly recommend that this is a great opportunity in the direction we're going, but it would, the full changes would be implemented over the 24 to 28 school year in terms of the growth that we're doing. I think, on all fronts, we're moving in a great direction. I think you hear a lot of comments, you hear a lot of laughter, most of what you hear, none of it's occurred, none of it has occurred or will occur. What we are doing is taking New College, and we are going to make it the number-one liberal arts college in the country, and there's just no doubt about, we're on that direction. I want to thank you guys for your support, and at any point in time, we're going to try to send out those weekly updates, so you can see this is what transpired. We've had the lieutenant governor on campus, we've had the great legislative visit, things are going well, and New College is getting noticed. And so, hopefully, we'll have a banner year, a banner fall, and, and we will achieve, if you read in the accountability plan, our goal is not to be, you know, top five, top four Florida, our goal is to be the number-one liberal arts college in the country, hands down.
That's right. Thank you, President Corcoran. It's a fantastic report.
President Corcoran, I don't know if you've had time to delve into the current career preparedness efforts. We've kind of highlighted paid internships as a way to get people into employers. We've highlighted certifications, so that people come with competencies that employers recognize. We're giving people interview clothes, we're teaching them how to do resumes, they have to go on LinkedIn. So could you comment on what you think our current status is of career preparedness, and maybe some initial thoughts of how you think it can be enhanced?
Again, I think academic, what I'm talking about here is academically enhancing that kind of concept into the curriculum, whether it be data science, whatever those things are, that'll make our students that much more competitive. things are, that'll make our students that much more competitive in the marketplace. But Duane, I've met with Duane numerous times, and that was actually bought up, so it's a great question, Trustee Ruiz. For our existing students, where we get dinged by the Board of Governors, more than anything else, we're at the near bottom in the university system, is in terms of our retention and our employment or graduate work post, one-year post-graduation. So what we're doing, and hopefully we'll have that for you guys to look at in the next three weeks or so, we've got to move quickly, if not sooner, on some of it, is we're looking at trying to give some sort of scholarship to our graduates, even though they're done working, but some sort of scholarship, we just got to go through all the legal, because if they have a graduate program that they're enrolled in, or if they have a job that meets the requirements of the metrics, we are going to give you a scholarship, so that would hopefully increases our metrics. Maybe, I don't know what that costs, let's just say it costs $150,000 for, $1,000 for all 150 graduates. It brings in another $2 million. So I don't, I said to, I don't care if we have to spend, you know, and Chris is looking at me, I know it's like 1.89, you know, so I'm going to round up to 2, Chris. But, you know, if, I don't care if we spend 1.9 million to bring in the other 2 million, all it does is increase our reputation, increase our brand, and we're still making money. So let's do it. The other one is on retention. So right now, we have the freshman class, we get paid on that retention, those are the two metrics that would give us the extra 1.9 million dollars. And so we're looking into some sort of retention scholarship for those students in hopes to build our retention numbers. Now, again, we're always, you know it well from being on the Board of Governors, we're always a year behind or a two-year behind, depending on the metrics, especially with employment after work. But those are things that we can get to. If you take a 10-year look or a 12-year look at New College, 80% of our graduates went on to graduate work 10 years ago, give or take. Brad would probably know the exact dates. Now, it's about 20%. So those are things that we need to work on and encourage, and including faculty. You know, what we do great at New College is we have a personal relationship with our faculty and our students, almost a quasi-big brother, big sister friendship. And what we need, though, is those, in that capacity, in that mentoring, in that helping those students grow and move on to the next level, we'd like to see and incentivize our faculty, so let's say we have 150 graduates, and three of them are in anthropology. You know, also an incentive for our faculty that, hey, if you're three AOC graduates, all three are going on to graduate school, or all three have immediate work, that comply with the metrics, we want to reward them too. We want to get everybody on the same page of facilitating excellent outcomes for our students with that world-class education, that also tangentially give us these additional revenues of $2 million. But we're working closely with Duane on those incentive programs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, President Corcoran, thanks, thank you for a great report. I just want to emphasize, or maybe I have you emphasize a little bit more, two points. I just, it just, they kind of are astounding to me that, I think some people might be overlooking or missing the obvious saying here, $45 million strikes me as a lot of injection of finances into the college at a time when it needs it. How does that compare to previous years? It seems like an astounding shift, and how will that play out in the future? And then, in your, how do you see that? And then, secondly, I was also struck by you saying that, in the discussion about kind of assessing the curriculum and thinking these things through, the plan here, and your understanding of it, is not to change the identity, but to restore the college. I think we should miss out on, and not realize a huge injection of the money to save the college and a restoration of what it is, strikes me as an astounding plan that I think should be emphasized more.
Yeah, on both, well, again, I'll give you the average, I can go through year by year, and some of them were, as a result of circumstances, but the average revenue to the foundation over the last 15 years is about 2.5 million dollars. If I was to look over the last five years, some of them have dipped as low as 1.2 million dollars in an entire calendar year. Unheard of for a college of the reputation of New College, almost inexplicable, and that will change. And so when I say, you know, you take Ringling, it's an excellent college, they're doing great work, they're not a, they're not a liberal arts elite college like New College. They're very, it's much more specialized-type degrees, and they do it excellently, and their outcomes are excellent, and they've been able to go and sell, this is what we do, this is our brand, we do it to perfection, and if you come here, then, or you donate here, this is what's the outcomes that are going to happen. Their kids are graduating, they're going to Pixar, they're going to Disney, they're going to all these great, you know, digital art-type institutions that require it. That leads to 15 to 25, or 20 million dollars annually in this, you know, 20-by-20-mile radius. Obviously, a very successful 20-by-20 mile radius, but regardless, and we're in that same radius with a much broader, I think, I wouldn't even say bigger, but I think it's, I do think it's bigger, but broader mission and outcome for our potential students, and we're at, as low as 1.2 million in the last five years. It's just, it's inexplicable. So I think if we get, and we move these changes, and we move through, and as amicable and as cooperatively and as collaboratively as we possibly can with these changes, which are very, very well received by, the concepts are very well received, the specifics, they always say the devil's in the details, the specifics, we got to iron out and work together on, but the concepts are very, very well received. And so I think that's going to allow us to go there, and it's hard to go and say, you know, to a big, you know, donor, you know, give to New College, and here's our trajectory of enrollment, here's our trajectory of funds in the foundation, here's the trajectory of our buildings, all of these things, it's just, it's not, it's not going to work, and that's why we see it has, you know, the, and when I met with the faculty, I said, we have to confront the brutal facts, and the brutal fact is this, is what was there was not working. It doesn't mean we don't have great faculty, it doesn't mean we have great students, but the corpus of what was New College was in decline. There's no arguing that fact. And so we have to fix that, and when we fix that, and we have that vision, and you go to those donors, there's people at this table, if we get it right, will absolutely say, I'm fine being a trustee, but I would also like to be a significant donor, and they sit here at this table, and it's our job to not just win your hearts and your minds, but to show you this is the trajectory we're on, and we will. On the second part, is, it's very, very true, and this is a conversation we have, I keep looking and pointing at Trustee Lipinski, but he's obviously our faculty lead, but what we have here is, in many, many ways, by any definition, to your point, Trustee Spalding, historical greatness. I mean, some of, you know, whether it's our Rhodes Scholars, whether it's our, the number of graduate students who go on, on a per capita base, to do graduate work, maybe not as so much recently, but over the years, we have led the nation, number one in the nation, not Florida, number one in the nation. These are statistics that are astounding, and the price value is second to none. Again, I don't want to make a comparison because we're two different institutions, but when you, when you look at admissions, you look at the discount rate, because that gives you your solvency as an institution. So our, you know, our tuition, give or take, about, you know, I'm going to say 8,000 bucks. Our discount rate right now, before we even do this massive influx of support for our students with additional scholarships, our discount rate is 85%. In other words, we're, you know, we basically, students are somewhere in the ballpark at 15% cost. You go to Ring, and by the way, our tuition's about $8,000. You go to Ringling, their tuition is $40,000. And their tuition, and their, and their, honestly, guys, none of us said anything while you spoke. If you just give us a, I'm fine with, just, if we can just finish. The, their discount rate is 25%. So it's an astounding solvency issue that they have, and honestly, we should be there, not in, not in the cost of tuition, I think the fact that our whole university system has been ranked number one for six years in a row by any metric, US News and World Report, whatever you want to call it, is because our affordability is so great, and the investment that's been made by the legislature and made by the governor in our education system, public education system, has been second to none. And so I think, to your point, when we get that time together and figure out that core and strengthen it, and to your point, it's a strengthening of the core, it's a, it's a building around the foundations of great success this university has had, and if we do that right, it will lead, I think, to significant dollars. Thank you.
Mr. Corcoran, I have a few quick questions.
We really don't have time, I'm sorry.
So this is the only time that we're really able to hold them accountable?
Okay, well then, this meeting is going to go, how late can, how late can we keep people here? You do it again, and I'm going to have you removed in the blue shirt. You do not talk to me that way, you do not talk to the people on this dais that way. You do not control this.
Thank you, it should be very quick.
She's letting her speak.
I'm letting her speak. Understand, we have an agenda, this meeting was scheduled to end at 4 o'clock, so you're welcome to stay all night.
Thank you, Chair. It should be very quick, and I'm not sure if your VP of Enrollment is here to answer questions, but the two questions, what's the number of deposited students today, and what's the number of the same time last year?
I want to, I don't know the, I'm going to be plus or minus, Grace, I should have bought them. I think we're at 110, and we're at 136.
Okay, got you.
And I can confirm that for you.
Thank you. And then, in future meetings, is it possible to have that number ready at meetings, because in past years, usually that's a solid thing that happens at meetings, especially?
It's a public record, we'll share it anytime, anyplace, with anyone, at any time.
Thank you so much.
Anybody have any other questions, interim President Corcoran? No?
And as you know, Grace, sorry, unlike, I think, most universities, if you go to our website, we have a lot of these numbers I quote, it's just publicly on our website. I just go there for our enrollment numbers, for fresh enrollment, overall enrollment numbers, so, I mean, we'll continue to be, hopefully, the most transparent university in the system.
Thank you.
We good? All right, we'd like to call up interim Provost Brad Thiessen. He's going to discuss the draft 2023 Accountability Plan. It was in your materials to the Board. It starts on page 43 of the 212 PDF document. You have the floor, interim provost, thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure you speak up, so that...
Yeah, so I'll keep this quick as well, because President Corcoran just gave the strategy. So the Accountability Plan in front of you, it's an annual process with the Board of Governors, where we set our goals and also outline our performance on those goals for the next five years. It's tied to performance-based funding, but the trustees who've been on for a while, that "FUN" PBF presentation, or "FUN" maybe in quotes, that comes usually in September, so I'm not going to go deep dive into our performance, this is more on setting the goals for what's to come. So in the Accountability Plan, again, the first several sections is narrative about strategy, strengths, opportunities, and so on. Again, I'll just say, President Corcoran provided that here, you know, strengthening the core of what New College is, and hopefully leading to funding. And whoever was the interim president when we got that 15 million must have done a phenomenal job. But I'll skip ahead. I wanted one intentional laugh. So, I'll skip to the goals. What I did simply on the goals is, I kept our goals from previous years, right? We know we're in a state of transition, there are definite reasons to be optimistic about enrollment and about our other goals, graduation rates, but I wasn't confident setting what those goals would be, so I kept our goals from the previous Accountability Plan and just extended them going forward. So you don't see much change there. The enrollment goals changed slightly based on more data that we had, but again, I set that goal three weeks ago when we were down 34%. So standing here today, I might increase that enrollment goal for next year. Beyond that, I'll ask for questions at this point, because otherwise, what this process is, is if you approve this plan, it goes to the Board of Governors by May 1st, where it will be presented to the Board in June by President Corcoran. But any specific questions about any goals or anything in the plan?
I do have a question. Dr. Thiessen, so how exactly was this plan created, and who has shown it or had contributed to this plan in any way?
In any way, okay, I'll take those in order. So I began writing this plan right when we got the template, technically, so months ago, but the narratives, I started last week, two weeks ago maybe, I drafted everything from the strengths, opportunities, challenges section to the end, and then I saved the strategy for President Corcoran to draft. Who contributed, it's a big team effort in any way, so the data come from various offices, the goals I usually check with every office as well, but in terms of setting the goals, I put that on myself typically each year, and then count on the Board if they have any disagreement to bring it to my attention.
Madam Chair?
Can I add to that?
Yeah, sure.
And then, obviously, over the course of the eight weeks I've been here, Grace, I've talked to numerous faculty, a lot of students, I've talked to a bunch of trustees in putting together the concepts that you find in the Accountability Plan.
Okay, and then the mission statement and statement of strategy was you?
It was a corporate work, a corporate work, yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think the metrics are reasonable. It's always a little anxiety-producing, since we don't have control over all the factors, and they are trailing, we're really going to be measuring things that went before, but I think they're reasonable, and Brad has been through this many times, and if he's looking confident, I'm feeling confident. The one thing I wanted to address was the mission, because it is changed from the previous Accountability Plan, and I don't know if this is unique to state institutions, but it applies to New College. We have a statute where the legislature tells us what our mission is, and there are some concepts in that statute. Mr. Galvano, it's 1,004.32, and I'm just going to read it real quickly, because it's short. "New College of Florida with a campus in Sarasota County serves a distinctive mission as the residential liberal arts honors college of the state of Florida. To maintain this mission, New College of Florida has the following goals: to provide a quality education to students of high quality. I think retaining the notion of high quality is important in our, in our mission. Who, because of their ability, deserve a program of study that is both demanding and stimulating. To engage in educational reform by combining educational innovation and educational excellence." We talk about it, but I don't see it in our mission. "To provide programs of study that allow students to design their educational experience as much as possible in accordance with their individual interests, values, and abilities." And the last one, "to challenge students not only to master existing bodies of knowledge," but you've heard this from our student speakers today, "but also to extend the frontiers of knowledge through original research." The secret sauce, in my opinion, to a New College education, is this opportunity to do original research. That is why we excel in graduate schools, that is why students come here. So what I'd like to do is to propose that we include the statutory language in our mission in addition to what is in the Accountability Plan, so that those legislative points are honored, but it's also because I don't, I don't think it's just for the bureaucracy of it, it's because it contains some important points I don't want to lose.
I have no...
Yep, Madam Chair, I think if you wanted to, you could reference it within the mission statement, so then it encompasses all that language as well as the mission statement.
Right, but we need a motion to approve the Accountability Plan, and then we can have the discussion and include the...
I have some amendments that I'd like to propose.
We need a motion first, just to prove it, because it's, here's how it is.
So procedurally, Commissioner Ruiz has made a proposal, not a formal motion yet, but I assume that's coming soon. That's a motion to amend, we'll take that up, and then if you, Trustee Keenan, have an additional amendment, then you could raise it by motion at that time.
Okay, so you first?
Okay, so I move that we approve the Accountability Plan with the amendment of including the mission statement by reference as contained in Florida Statute 1,004.32.
A second? Second? Okay.
One more clarification, I'm not trying to get hyper-technical, but we're approving the amendment to the plan, the way the motion was articulated. So what the motion is, is I move to amend the Accountability Plan mission statement by adding a reference and incorporation of Florida Statute 1,004.32.
Okay, that's what I understood, so can we vote on that now, and then have, so all those in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is that reference in law to the original New College mission, or I believe there are some additional, there have been amendments since then?
This is the, I pulled the 2022 Florida statutes, so this is the latest.
But that's where we're going, that's what we're referring to.
Right, it would have to be current law.
And by incorporating it by reference, our attorney is making sure it's the latest.
Just clarifying.
Okay, so can we...
Madam Chair, before we vote, can I ask, Trustee Ruiz, was your intention to just, it seems odd to me, forgive me for using that phrase, but it seems odd to me that we would amend something that we haven't adopted yet. Trustee Ruiz, was your, was your motion to move to adopt the plan with a modification, or was it just to adopt a modification?
Well, my motion was the former, but we're getting advice from our attorney that it should be the latter.
Yes. Okay, well, I'll defer to, I'll defer to counsel on it.
So assuming the amendment passes, then you would have the motion to approve as amended?
Thank you, sir.
Right. Well, we have a motion. We haven't voted on it.
So we have a motion.
And the motion is to add reference to the language, not remove anything.
Correct. Okay. So the motion as made by Trustee Ruiz, do we, let's do, I guess a roll. We did have a second. Yeah, okay.
You can do voice vote.
So we can do a voice vote? So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Anyone opposed? Nope. Okay. So that's been so moved. Now, we had another amendment on the Accountability Plan that has been provided to the board by Trustee Keenan and we'll let her address her Accountability Plan amendments. You should have received this handed out already. It was handed out when we started. Okay.
Okay. So these are a couple language changes. And so for fourth point is strength and quality and reputation of academic programs. I changed the language a little bit to again align with our statute. And I'm specifically referencing, and it's on the paper so you can see it there, Part C in statute of our mission and goals, "to provide programs of study that allow students to design their educational experience as much as possible in accordance with their individual interests, values, and abilities." And so the issue I see with this specific language is we are now limiting the curriculum. And so this doesn't necessarily mean that there won't be changes to core curriculum or anything like that, but I wanted to make sure that the language specifically aligns with our statute. The next portion is on Goal Five, "be a beacon for free speech to the nation." I added an additional point. And so this is, I'm bringing to you as my experience as a student here. It'd be incredibly helpful in our documents in the college, the faculty handbook, student code of conduct, our regulations, if we just codify those specific protections and they'd be in alignment with the Chicago principles. And then the final was just, because I'm particular with language, "uniquely prepare our students to conquer the world." I changed to engage with. And so that is because the paragraph underneath sounds more like engaging with instead of conquering. And so that's just a separate thing. So if we wanted to change the paragraph to be conquering, I'd say we'd have to make sure that language actually matches. And that was just a subtle change that doesn't seem to change. Oh, and so back into the fourth, that was again talking about making sure it's in alignment with our statute. And I felt that it wasn't necessary necessarily to add that language about kehada, kaj podge of courses because then that's suggesting that we do have that. Otherwise, unless anyone has proof that we do, I really don't think that is true. And I think especially when we're going to be sending a document to the Board of Governors, we want it to be concise and precise and include only the information that they need to know. And so again, the main purpose was to make sure it's in line with our statute and not limiting any sort of curriculum. Anybody have any questions about that?
I would second that.
Was it a motion?
Motion to make these amendments.
To the Accountability Plan, to paragraphs four, five, and six as provided to the Board of Trustees. Okay, and there's a second. All right.
And President Corcoran, I think you're in agreement with these.
I think they're all fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you, Grace.
So let's just do a voice. So are we amending the motion? We're amending the...
No, you, this is another amendment to the Accountability Plan. And then we'll be back on the main question.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
How many?
It was all favor. They were saying aye.
Okay, okay. All right. So that motion has passed. So you're requested...
Thank you.
Changes to Accountability Plan. So what do we need to do?
So now a motion to approve the Accountability Plan as amended.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Roll call. Let's do a roll call.
Because you're on the main question.
Trustee Bauerline?
Yes.
Trustee Karp?
Yes.
Trustee Keenan?
Yes.
Trustee Kessler? He had to drop off. Trustee Lipinski?
Yes.
Trustee Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Ruffo?
Yes.
Trustee Ruiz?
Yes.
Trustee Spalding?
Yes.
Trustee Spear?
Yes.
Chair Jinks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cristaldi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So, Mr. Thiessen, you understand what changes need to be made to the plan?
Yep.
And then this will go up to, you said, the Board of Governors?
Yeah.
Don't move. We, at this point, the Chair and the trustees authorize the President to evaluate and augment curriculum at New College and work with faculty to discuss and teach this curriculum, beginning with the implementation in the fiscal, in the year 2023, 2024. And you'll report back to us on the board with what recommendations you have?
Will do.
Okay, great.
Madam Chair, I just want to make sure that our new trustees know this. We have core requirements. You know, you can't, you can't take everything in one division. You have to take some a beach to get abroad. There are other requirements. And so what we're really talking about is looking at those core requirements and adjusting them based on these new resources and based on the interest in supplementing our Western Classics curriculum. So I just want to say that because this is not a new idea at New College.
Thank you. We understand. Thank you. Mr. Thiessen, you're up again. Item Eight on the agenda is for you to review the changing of institutional creditors. And that's in our materials that we received as a board.
Yeah, so you'll find this quickly if you look for the map picture. I'll admit, I was a little disappointed when I saw the agenda and I didn't see Chris Kinsley's name because it means I had the most boring agenda item of the week.
That's usually reserved for Chris. You're right.
So again, this is pretty quick. If you're looking at that map, so up until summer of 2020, higher education accreditation typically worked as the map shows. There are six regional creditors. And if you have a university or college at least headquartered within a region, that was your accreditor. You followed their standards and life was good. But in July of 2020, the U.S. Department of Education allowed for these regional creditors to become institutional creditors, to accredit any university outside their jurisdiction, so outside that region. And following that, Florida Statute 1,008.47 requires Florida colleges and universities, public colleges and universities, to switch from our current accreditor, SAC COC, to our choice, our voluntary choice of any other accreditor. So that's what's going on here. And at the bottom of the page, what I'm asking this board is to answer two questions or to approve what I'm recommending the answers to these questions be. Question One is, which accreditor do we switch to? And question Two is, when do we begin this process? So the next page. We are required by state law to switch creditors. Question Two, we'll get to that. So question One, which accreditor do we voluntarily choose to switch to? So that's the table with the red and green on it. And so what's happening here is that the accreditation liaisons from across the Florida State University system, as well as the accreditation focuses of Florida College System, met in separate groups and evaluated every accreditor. How much would it cost to change? Would they accept all the Florida universities or colleges changing in a short period of time? How similar are they to our mission, our unique missions? And so this table summarizes the results of, again, there's a lot more details of this analysis. And so what it shows is green is good, red is typically bad. So for example, that first row, if you looked at the ranked public liberal arts schools across the country, 39% of them are at that M S C H E, the Middle States region. 30% are Higher Learning Commission and so on. And so when you go through these metrics that I've outlined here, how many schools similar to New College? How long would it take to complete this process? What is the cost to the institution, at least financially and workload-wise? It's pretty clear that the Higher Learning Commission is the best choice. And the other Florida universities reached the same conclusion. And so University of Central Florida and Florida Polytechnic have already begun this process to switch to the Higher Learning Commission. So there, again, I give more details in the paragraph below. My recommendation at the bottom there, and we can treat these separately or as a package, was that we begin the process to switch creditors to the Higher Learning Commission.
Did you have a timeframe on that? Are you saying immediately?
Yeah.
That's number two, so I'm just trying to decide.
We can do this as a package deal, I think.
Okay, fine. Go ahead.
Yes. So then the second question on the next page with the chart, the table there shows, when should we begin this process? We're required by law to switch creditors in the year following our next major accreditation review. So for New College, on the left, it shows what that default timeline would be. That the new accreditor, we would begin the process of switching in 2026. Okay, so why wouldn't we wait, right? Procrastination can be a good thing as students are finishing their backs. You all know that. So we could wait. However, the danger in doing that is to look at the other thing on the left side there. We also have, through this process, as we're switching creditors, we have to maintain our current accreditation. So if we wait until 2026 or 2027, what we're going to have is by 2030 to do a major tenure review for SAC COC on top of a major review for a new accreditor. So unless we're really going to staff up the accreditation office beyond me, fine. I don't recommend doing that. I recommend we take the path on the right, the red pill there, colored red. My recommended timeline is, let's start the process now because it's going to take years anyway. So if we start the process now, what you're granting me the authority to begin is to begin the letter to the U.S. Department of Education asking for their approval to switch creditors.
Madam Chair, I just want to say that SACs was never the perfect fit for us. When you look at things that would be important to us, ranked public arts, liberal arts, public university representation on the board, the price, which is always a concern when you're using taxpayer money, it never was a good fit. So this board has been entertaining, reviewing accrediting agencies and selecting the one that's the better fit. So this is the culmination of probably, what, a year of work?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's not a snap decision. And I think that if we don't start now, we won't be ready and we will have to carry the double burden of two accreditation. So I just wanted to give that a little bit of background. It sounds like it's a snap decision. It is definitely not. This has been a shared process with the other universities and also looking at New College's best interest. We don't have to go with the other universities. We are free to choose our own. It just so happens that HLC is the best choice for us.
Okay. Thank you. Do we need a...
Great.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to pack up what the Provost has pointed out. As someone who's gone through and been very familiar with accreditation processes, to do a tenure accreditation review and a new accreditation is essentially an impossible venture. That would be, it's not a matter of staffing up. That would be extremely difficult to do and I would not recommend that under any circumstances.
Do we need a...
So based on all these recommendations, can I move to approve? Yes, I would make a motion to direct staff to proceed this summer with the transition.
That would be the motion?
Yes.
Second.
Second, okay. And I will do a voice vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. See, that hard work paid off.
Thank you.
I think you're allowed to go. Thank you, interim Provost Thiessen, for your relentless work on this. I know it was hard among your other jobs to do. So we, on behalf of the board, we greatly appreciate your service here. We're on to Item Nine on the agenda. I would note it's 416. We were scheduled to go from two to four. Item Nine is from the Academic Student and External Affairs Committee. I'd like to turn the discussion over to Trustee Mark Bauerline to go over the Academic Student External Affairs Committee item that was deferred to the full board. So with that, Trustee Bauerline, you're on.
Right. This came last week to the committee and we decided to defer it to the full board for a fuller discussion. One reason that I was motivated to do so was that in my academic experience, the incidence of early tenure has been extremely rare and has been granted only in exceptional circumstances. And the appearance of five was quite a surprise. And so what I would like to ask is counsel can give us a little bit of context and history for this process.
Madam Chair?
Yes. You're recognized.
So procedurally, this is what I'm going to tell you where we are procedurally and then what your role is as a Board of Trustees. So as Trustee Bauerline just mentioned, you have applicants before you, five applicants, who have sought early tenure. In order to do so, which is allowed under both the Faculty Handbook as well as the collective bargaining agreement and the procedures provide for that. In order to get to this point for a board decision, which is the only entity that could decide whether tenure is granted, denied, deferred. It's not the President, it's not the Provost, it's this board. This board has the final decision. In order to get before this board, these applicants had to a-assemble their files for evaluation. They had to have their division, the division for which they're in, vote to make a recommendations at a three-fourths vote. The Provost Advisory Committee does its own, looks at that vote and does its own evaluation and then shares with the Provost, who at the time was Provost Sherman, the division chairs' recommendation, the divisions' vote, as well as the Provost Advisory Committee position. The Provost then makes a recommendation to the President. The President then is entitled to review the recommendation. And in the event the President wants to make a contrary recommendation, the rules require that that contrary recommendation be in writing and delineate extraordinary circumstances. That is what you have in your packet from President Corcoran. Your packet also includes every, all the documentation that was assembled along the way to get through this series of steps to get to this Board of Directors. Now at rest with you all, you all make the final decision, as I said earlier, irrespective of how we got here. In order, not to repeat myself, but in order to get here, that's where we are procedurally. And so you can make a decision to approve early tenure, deny early tenure, or defer early tenure. Now what I would say is, because it is early, denial and deferment are tantamount to one another because they could come back during what's called the mandatory year and seek again. So that's what's before you and you, I would recommend that, in fact, you must take them one at a time.
Mr. Galvano, I have a couple of procedural questions. So you've explained it very clearly, but there's, this is the wrong term of legal art because I'm not a lawyer, but there's a kind of double jeopardy here because one President, albeit interim, approved it coming to the board and another has said, wait a minute, we need to wait. And so in terms of due process, I want to make sure that we're not bumping up against some requirement, you know, violation of a requirement. So that's one process requirement that I want to make sure we're, you know, according to oil on. And the other is, if we defer, and are we allowed to make changes to the requirements in that time? Or is it the same requirements, but now it's different timing? How does the, what is going to be different to whatever the date is that we defer it to? I guess that's the question. And Trustee Bauerline, the reason we have five is we got money from the legislature to hire more faculty, so we hired them all at the same time.
Not to jump in on that, but I did have the same question yesterday. And I emailed the Provost Office to get the statistics. And I just emailed it to the Board of Trustees email, so you should be able to see it if you would like to. So five years ago, we hired 15 faculty. Over the past 10 years, 30% have gone up in their fifth year. So about a third of 15 would be five. So this is pretty normal. And actually, I'd like to add... And actually, I'd like to add on top of that, if faculty are able to go up in that fifth year, that means they've already reached all the requirements needed in five instead of six-year, which I think is impressive. So I'm just adding that fact in.
That's not the way the tenure clock works. The academic norm isn't that when you reach all the requirements for tenure, then you go up. That's not the way it works. This is, I mean, the tenure clock, the six-year clock is 100 years old.
If you're going to interrupt our meeting, we cannot continue, so I ask you to please hold your comments. Mr. Bauerlein has the floor.
No, I just want to clarify that tenure doesn't normally happen when you've done all the things for tenure. There is a clock, we observe it, and again, I would say there are exceptional circumstances when someone can come up early. Now, if New College has different, with these candidates in the past, I understood that there were, I mean, I was told we've had far fewer than that in the history of New College. I don't know if anyone has, how many people have been given... How many people have been given accelerated tenure over the years?
What's the total, what's the total number, Grace?
So, in terms of, I'm going to have to count individually. One, two, three, four, seven, eight, and then one, two, three. Okay. I'm guessing, it looks like about eight out of 30, from my guess, which is where they got the 30%.
Is this the tenure data?
Yeah, so this is what I asked for, and I just forwarded to the Board of Trustees email.
So historically, eight have been given early tenure?
Yes, out of...
And this year, we had seven applicants.
So it's eight out of the last, eight out of the last 30 people on the tenure track have gone up early. So this is, prior to this year, the last 30 people on the tenure track, which was 10 years of our hiring, we had eight out of the 30 went up early.
In the last 10 years, there was eight?
Yes.
Which is 30%, which would add up to, when we had a huge year of hiring 15 faculty, 30% would be... Or 16, so it adds about up.
The other thing that I would add, again, just for context for those of you who weren't on the Board at the time, is when we got the infusion of cash and we were able to hire a lot of faculty at once, it was really an impressive college-wide effort led by Don O'Shea and Provost Feldman to where the entire campus was involved in identifying and recruiting talented faculty members. And so first of all, we were able to get a lot of people who had significant prior experience at other institutions, who we poached because they were excited about what we were doing at New College at the time. And then in addition to that, it's the only time that I'm aware of where every search that we did that year, we got our first-choice candidate. Where oftentimes, because we're competing against very prestigious schools for our faculty recruitment, but because of the excitement around what we were doing that year, we were unusually successful at getting really great faculty.
Mr., Dr. Thiessen, can you please come back to the podium? I'm going to have some questions, so really, to the Provost.
Sure.
For all of these candidates, did they meet the requirements necessary outlined in the collective bargaining agreement and the faculty handbook to get tenure?
Yeah, on February 24th, I signed my approval, yeah.
Okay. And so are there any other requirements, just to be completely overview? Are there any requirements that any of these candidates did not meet? It's the same question, I'm just trying to be thorough.
This is the final requirement.
Yeah, I'll give a little, so not all of them are clear hurdles where it's, you know, either yes or no. You know, there's an evaluation of the quality to which, yeah. So again, I'll repeat, February 24th, I signed that, according to my judgment, according to the Provost's judgment, that they had fulfilled the criteria up to that point to be recommended for tenure.
And so, this might be something better explained by Trustee Lipinski, but we're obligated to, this, the collective bargaining agreement is a legal document that we're bound by.
I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but, so I've been deferred of Mr. Galvano, but I know, I mean, obviously, this Board has an obligation to consider tenure cases and to consider these recommendations every spring.
Correct. And let me go back to Trustee Ruiz. This is the first time this issue has come before the Board, and you have the current President making his recommendation. You also were, was put in the packet was then-President Thiessen's letter, so that you can see the whole situation, but from a procedural standpoint, there is not a, an issue or a gap. The New College Faculty Handbook and the Collective Bargaining Agreement control, and yes, the participants to those agreements are bound to act under the requirements of those agreements, both of which have as a final step, after all the steps I went through, a decision by this Board, and the final decision rests with it. So again, you all are tasked with all the procedural information you know, all the documents, evaluations, recommendations, to make that final decision for early tenure for these candidates.
So Counsel Galvano, the way that was just couched, it made it sound like if we go with President Corcoran's recommendations here, that we would be going against the law. That's not the case, as I understand it, correct?
No, that is not what I said at all.
No, I know, but that's how it was couched, and I want to hear from you that that's not the case.
That is not the case. We are procedurally correct as to where we are right now, and the decision rests with the Board of Trustees.
And we are free to make a decision going with President Corcoran's recommendation, correct? Can we...
You are free to make a decision as an independent Board, each of you a trustee, irrespective of the recommendations of anyone through the process.
Certainly, certainly.
The process is what enables the candidates to get to this point, and so that is what gets them here. Once they're here, it's your decision.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask President Corcoran a couple of questions, if I might? Somebody else had the floor first, or no?
I think, Trustee Cristaldi.
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Cristaldi. Trustee Ruiz, I'm happy to yield to you, if I could, I might ask one question. And I apologize to my colleagues, but I'm going to have to, we're 30 minutes over, and I've got to be at another meeting here. My question is for Mr. Galvano. I understand that there's at least three options for us today. One would be to, for each of these individuals, there's three options. One would be to approve the tenure, one would be to deny the tenure, and one would be to defer the tenure, which I understand to mean would be to defer it to the next cycle, and they would be considered again. Is it, do we have to make one of those three decisions today, or can we table the decision until our next meeting? I'm just asking a procedural question.
You would have to make a decision today. The Faculty Handbook and the CBA say the decision should be made at the February meeting, but no later than the next meeting. And so I interpret that to mean it's before you today, and you need to make that decision.
Thank you.
So I have to ask a question. So this is early tenure, right? So the next time they would come up would be in the normal course of professors seeking tenure under the existing...
Which is called the mandatory year.
The mandatory year. So this is not saying you can't have it, it would just be a discussion of, do you get it early? A year early?
So after speaking to some of the faculty, it sounds like defer is similar to a no. And so if they have reached the requirements and gone through the full process, and this Board, for whatever reason that we have to provide, decides that we would rather defer, they're probably going to look for new jobs. And so I think it's also another important point to talk about the legal definition of what extraordinary circumstances may be. Because my concern, if we end up using Mr. Corcoran's MOU as our explanation for the faculty members, which we have to provide to them after our decision, if it's a no or defer, changes in administration, changes in trustee are pretty standard processes of the college, and we have many outlined procedures for those, so I don't know if those count as extraordinary. A renewed focus on liberal arts, again, since there's been no concrete change in our mission, that does not seem to be extraordinary. And then the point about the uncertainty needs of our divisions, the point about the uncertainty needs of the divisions, it's went through the divisions, and we also just got a lot of money to hire new faculty, so I don't know if that weighs as extraordinary. And so I worry that if we use that as the justification to do a no or defer, that we might get into some legal trouble. Does that make sense?
I understand what the point you're attempting to make, but I don't view it that way. You're not going to get into quote-unquote "legal" trouble. The requirement is simply this. If the President wants to have an opinion contrary to that of the Provost, the President is required to notify the Provost in writing and delineate the extraordinary circumstances that he determines are the basis for his contrary opinion. The reason why the Board is the final decision-maker is because all of this is not dispositive of whether or not tenure should be granted. It's up to you all.
Yeah, I would like to hear from the President. I mean, I think that, I'm not opposed to tenure, but it's unusual for it to come to this point, and then the President make a contrary recommendation. I think as a Board, you know, I'm, that's a strong hesitation in my mind to have that recommendation. I'd like to hear more from President Corcoran.
May I ask my question too, so that President Corcoran can address it?
I think that would speed it up, but yes.
I guess I'm, I know you're trying to accomplish a goal, you're a very goal-driven person. If I were a betting woman, I would say you're going to get your money. And so help us understand in the broader picture how you view these existing faculty with the new faculty, and you're headed to a place, a goal, and so I guess my question to you is, would approving these five tenures get in your way, given that we're going to be able to hire so many more faculty? Because I know you're, you have an end in mind, you're very intentional, and so I'd like to hear, along with Trustee Spalding, what you're thinking of.
I'll try to just walk you through the, and I think it'll answer, address both of your questions. And then I think we're at a point where the packet's before you guys, and you have a good understanding of where we're at, and we can go one by one. But first, I want to say that I had one of the early-tenured faculty come meet with me, this is how, in part, and she talked to me, and we had a good conversation. I said, well, because there was a deadline of March 15th where they could withdraw, voluntarily withdraw their application, and so I didn't want them to miss the deadline. So we all got together with Provost Thiessen was there also, but basically said, look, this is, there's no malice, there's no anything, you know, other than, there's no denying. I mean, the fact that this is the trustee meetings that have never existed like this before in the history of New College, there's no denying that we are in extraordinary circumstances. Extraordinary circumstances that have never been done before by New College, and I would argue, find me somebody that has had this much upheaval and this much change in a college in the country, if we're not number one, we're certainly in the top five. Extraordinary circumstances, nobody can argue with. And so what is that, then, looking at those extraordinary circumstances, what are they? One is, you have an interim Provost, and you have an interim President. You know, in six months, five months, whatever that process takes, in one year, you could have a brand-new President, a brand-new Provost, a brand-new, you know, literally potential direction, or changes to a direction, or tweaks to a direction. That's one. Two is, you have literally in the last, you know, 120 days, you have seven new trustees, a different majority on the current Board of Trustees. And two things that have been articulated very clearly is, we want to move, it's been spoken, including by you, Trustee Ruiz, is that we want to move more towards this, you know, a foundational, founding liberal arts that New College was founded on. We want to make sure we have that. And what does that mean? What does that mean? And those things are not in dispute even among the faculty. I sat in this room, right here, less than seven days ago, approximately seven days ago, and the entire discussion was about what kind of changes occur, whether it be with faculty, with curriculum, what does that core look like now? To the point in an engagement with the faculty that they're submitting proposals on how that would change and how that affects the division chairs and the division departments. Well, if all of that is true, and there's no repercussion whatsoever other than not getting tenure early, not one single tenured faculty person in this institution, since all of this change has happened, has been threatened or lost their job. Not one. There's, so nobody can point to that. We can talk about it, we can have that rhetoric, but it doesn't exist. And so with these extraordinary circumstances, and with absolute, it was a packed room of faculty, all of us discussing potential imminent changes that affect division chairs. All of that, or the extraordinary circumstances that say, let's just defer it one year.
I think my question is, will these circumstances be different in one year?
We're under the collective bargaining agreement, and we're under the faculty handbook, and those exist and are not up, but at the point that you would start the tenure process again, correct me wrong, Trustee Lipinski is in May, I want to say.
Yeah.
You begin the process.
Next year's tenure process starts with a, the Provost in May.
Right, and none of, and the collective bargaining agreement isn't even up for renegotiation of those components until July 1st. And so they would, it would already be an ex post facto situation.
And so by deferring, you automatically put them into that cohort?
Yes, yes.
So it's not a denial?
That's mandatory.
Yeah.
They have to come before.
I guess I'm having a failure of imagination, because I hear what you're saying, and I understand the bigger picture, but I'm failing to understand how it affects chemistry and marine biology, and... I mean, I...
We have three division chairs, you know, and that's the discussion. What does that look like? And is chart your course that, is it four? All of that is literally being discussed day by day on this campus.
Well, and I think...
And I want to say this too, Chair, Trustee Ruiz, is when I met with them, there was seven. There wasn't, it wasn't 33%, it was like 40-some percent a record, and there were seven. An open discussion, Chairman, I mean, interim Provost Thiessen was there, and two of them, there's seven, two walked away saying, I get what, I get the point, I get the extraordinary circumstances, and withdrew their application. The other five did not. It's, this is not, you know, I get that when you have this kind of change, you have mistrust, you have, change is scary, but there's nothing that we have done that anyone can constructively point to from that podium that has done anything but protect New College and strengthen it.
And I certainly appreciate that this year is going to be a process of change, and indeed, New College has been through, had change in the past, which has gotten us to USF and away from USF and to where we are now. And one of the things that we've learned from this is that we hire incredibly broad faculty members. So in order to meet the needs of our existing academic program, all of the faculty members who are up for tenure today have developed new classes in consultation with the division chairs, because that's what was needed at the time. And these are broad scholars in traditional liberal arts disciplines like chemistry and history and music, and they will develop the courses that are needed in consultation with the leadership for what goes forward. And I think this is a moment in time where, given that we're in this process... And I think this is a moment in time where, given that we're in this process of change, where we also need a little bit of stability. And I'm concerned about the way that we might risk destabilizing programs to the detriment of our current students if we go and categorically deny tenure to people who have demonstrated loyalty to the school.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I just, just from a procedural standpoint, because I think we're getting into debate, we had the overall-
Could we motion to approve tenure for Professor Black? Should we get into that process?
If you want to make that motion, you can make that motion.
I made that motion.
Before we have any votes, my question is, and it sounds like you answered my question, but I just want to make sure. All the candidates that were up for tenure, you did meet with, you reviewed, you talked to, and you talked to them about the change that's coming. And you gave them the opportunity to draw back if they didn't want to. So that leaves me to believe that they're okay with change and that they're willing to go forward with change, because they would have had the opportunity to withdraw their applications, correct? Okay, that's just how I was understanding it.
You have a motion on the floor right now to approve tenure for Professor Black.
So is the choice-
I have a second.
There's a second.
Defer or?
So if somebody would like to do that?
The motion is either approved or denied. And then you can have another motion as well.
I think if the vote's not passed, it's a denial.
Correct.
No, so you can, I think from my understanding, we can do a vote to approve tenure. And so if the vote passes, a tenure is approved. It does not pass, tenure's not approved, but there would still be another vote to deny tenure. Or defer.
By operation of the motion to approve, it becomes a denial. A motion to defer is an independent motion.
So we can do a motion to approve, it does not pass, we can do a motion to defer to next year? Because automatically, would they get?
You've just denied it, if it fails.
So I think the clarifying language in the packet we got, so if they do not get tenure today, they would still be able to go up next year? Right? So do we need to do, if we do one vote to approve, and that be the solid vote, if it does not pass, they go up next year? Or would we need to do another vote to defer?
Because it is early, you don't need to do a separate vote. And you normally would not do that in the course of a decision like that. Because a similar motion could have been made by another trustee to defer. But you have made a motion to approve, that motion is either affirmative or negative. If it's negative, then that is a denial.
Which still allows them to go up next year regardless.
Okay, that makes sense, so I think the motion's been gone.
Considering it's early, tenure for early approval, if denied or deferred today, would their jobs be any different tomorrow than it was yesterday?
There's, there's no, oh, in terms of their, yeah, I mean, they could say that that, you know, again, two of the five withdrew, and I think they're coming back next year, and they're going to go through the process. So two of the five didn't have an issue with that. And then the other five could say, well, maybe this was a bad, you know, an omen or something, and make that decision. But it's been, you know, again, the facts and the course of conversation has suggested the complete otherwise.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, you have a motion on the floor.
I don't make this one a roll call. Yeah.
It will be a roll call.
Let's just do it.
Okay, roll call.
And I'm sorry, just to clarify, a vote against this does not prevent them from coming up to tenure. But since it's not a deferral, it will not occur automatically, or it still will occur automatically?
Both, either way. Because for early, there really isn't a denial, because they can come up the next year. So, but there isn't, the concept of deferral is not clearly stated in the, so that's why in the motion, I mean, in the recommendation I gave you, whether it's defer or deny, it functions 100% the same.
So a vote against this is the equivalent of deferring?
Deferring or denying, it's the same.
If this were, let me just clarify, if this were the mandatory year,
Oh, that would be different.
Then it would have a greater ramification. Because it is not, it does not preclude the reevaluation.
So if we support deferral, we would vote against it?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I have a question for trustee Baurline. You're a tenured professor, you've reviewed these packets, did you find any of them defective in some way? Or is it a procedural concern that you have?
Well, I would, if we wanted to get into details, I think that there are some weak publication records since hiring by a few of them.
Madam Chair, we're on a specific motion with regard to a specific applicant.
So the motion, there was a motion made by trustee-
Keenan.
Keenan for an up or down on Dr. Rebecca Black, right?
Yes, and I second.
Oh, you second, okay.
I thought her motion was for all five.
We can't do it all five, we got to go one by one, right. So, here we go.
So we'll do a roll call vote?
Do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baurline?
No.
Trustee Karp?
No.
Trustee Keenan?
Yes.
Trustee Lipinski?
Yes.
Trustee Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Ruffo?
No.
Trustee Ruiz?
Yes.
Trustee Spalding?
No.
Trustee Spear?
No.
Chair Jinks?
No.
Does not pass.
Okay.
Chair Jinks, can we have some people removed?
You know, it's just too much work, so if you-
Let's just finish.
Let's just finish, okay, all right, Grace, Ms. Keenan, go ahead, you want to do the next one?
Move to approve tenure for Professor Lang. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baurline?
No.
Trustee Karp?
No.
Trustee Keenan?
Yes.
Trustee Lipinski?
Yes.
Trustee Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Ruffo?
No.
Trustee Ruiz?
Yes.
Trustee Spalding?
No.
Trustee Spear?
No.
Chair Jinks?
No.
Fails.
Okay, we have-
Move to approve tenure for Professor Nagaz.
Is there a second for?
Second.
Okay. Please call the roll call vote.
Trustee Baurline?
No.
Trustee Karp?
No.
Trustee Keenan?
Yes.
Trustee Lipinski?
Yes.
Trustee Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Ruffo?
No.
Trustee Ruiz?
Yes.
Trustee Spalding?
No.
Trustee Spear?
No.
Chair Jinks?
No.
Fails.
I move to approve tenure for Professor Toro Farmer.
Second.
Trustee Baurline?
No.
Trustee Karp?
No.
Trustee Keenan?
Yes.
Trustee Lipinski?
Yes.
Trustee Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Ruffo?
No.
Trustee Ruiz?
Yes.
Trustee Spalding?
No.
Trustee Spear?
No.
Chair Jinks?
No.
Fails.
And then finally, I move to approve tenure for Professor Vera Vargas. Early tenure. Is there a second?
Trustee Baurline?
No.
Trustee Karp?
No.
Trustee Keenan?
Yes.
Trustee Lipinski?
Yes.
Trustee Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Ruffo?
No.
Trustee Ruiz?
Yes.
Trustee Spalding?
No.
Trustee Spear?
No.
Chair Jinks?
No.
Fails.
So what do we say, like, what happens next year, just procedurally?
So procedurally, the president will notify, notify them of the board action.
Okay, we've heard your, we've heard your comments. Any new business? New business?
Did you say new business, yeah. I'd like to task the campus police to give us a threat assessment and give us a recommendation at the next board meeting.
On what?
Overall threat assessment. Part of our task has a, has a Board of Trustees is student safety. And so I would like to ask the campus police to assess the threat and give this board a new report of the threat assessment at the next board meeting.
So, so, so we can address that through?
The president can make that recommendation.
I can do that.
He can do that, but as I understand from Alan Levine, that this is something that the Board of Trustees has, and I'm not comfortable delegating that to the president. I think that's something that the Board of Trustees needs to take up.
But I think we would delegate the task of gathering the information to the president to bring back the board.
So then he would prepare the report?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, and if there's action that the board needs to take, we would, you know, bring it before the board and vote on it.
So moved.
Okay.
And may I also ask that we include information and reports from past trustee meetings, including, I was aware that there was some sort of death threat or situation from the meeting with you and trustee Ruffo. So any reports of that incident, can we please include that in the police report?
Okay, so, so let me, let me-
Just give me the discretion to look at it and bring it back to the board. If it's inadequate, they can ask, they can ask.
I mean, if it's, if, we have to see what comes back, so before we-
I mean, there was a death threat, so I think it, there should be something.
We'll compile all that information, and bring it back before you.
Thank you so much.
So is there a second for his motion?
I'll second that, with my part included, thank you.
There's a need for a motion.
Doesn't need a motion.
Totally doesn't need a motion.
Okay, then one other. I'd like to task the Strategic Planning Committee to gather information from the community and make a couple of recommendations to this board regarding the name of a mascot.
So there is, there is a process underway. There is a process underway for the mascot, I would turn the floor over to President-
I'm sorry, I still can't hear you.
Yeah.
We, we've done a campus survey, we've gotten results back. And then we'll continue to do a community survey and get as much data and information as possible, and bring it before you guys.
Wouldn't it be good to have that at a Strategic Planning Committee? And have that discussion, have the Strategic Planning Committee make a couple of recommendations to this board?
Historically, things like mascots would usually fall under, like, student government. And so, so that's something, I'm part of the Strategic Planning Committee, that I can bring up and work with interim President Corkwin on the results of that survey, if that satisfies what you're kind of talking about.
I think it's a better process.
Yes, that would be good.
So then that would come before this board, then?
I don't think, ultimately, I don't think today, but we don't have a mascot list yet to pick from.
Well, we need to, we need to get moving on it quickly.
That's being worked on.
So, at the next meeting?
Yes. And so we have now, we're at 4:55, we're-
That was it.
Okay, thank you, trustee Spear, appreciate it.
Just very quickly, so thank you, all of you. I'm very concerned about the direction that this board is going and the destabilization of the academic program. And so I wish you the best of luck, but this is my last board meeting, I'm leaving the college.
All right, meeting, meeting's adjourned, thank you.